Yes. Yeah, I saw Shonda in Springfield today. She should be here. I've got six o'clock. I think it's six.
Friday to recognize Phyllis Clark for her service to the city on both of her times being city clerk. It was good to be here and wish Phyllis well in her retirement and really appreciate the staff that worked to make that event a possibility.
Thank you. Sharice.
To kind of dovetail on what James was saying, I will miss Ms. Clark so much because we used to have so much fun just chit-chatting. And she was my sounding board. She's been my sounding board for the past couple of years. And I will really miss, of course, she did great service, but I will really miss just having conversation. And I want to add to that, that her choosing of Darcy Sandifer as a replacement, I think, has been a very good decision. I have watched Darcy work and work and grow through, for the past couple of years, and I think Darcy will make an excellent replacement for her. So, Ms. Phyllis, I hope you enjoy your retirement, and I do hope sincerely that you get to do more than worry about other folks.
Any other comments? Grace.
Thank you. Well, I do have comments at the other meeting. This one relevant to this meeting. I would just echo congratulations to our clerk, Ms. Clark, and congratulations on your retirement. Thank you for your service. And also with Darcy, I've had nothing but positive experiences as deputy clerk, and so I look forward to her taking over that role as well. So, thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah. Going to sound like a broken record, but definitely want to say thank you to Phyllis Clark for all of the work that she has done for the city for many years. And especially for this council, you know, so many of us coming in knew it was a lot to take in, and we received, excuse me, incredible support, not only from city staff, but also from the clerk's office. And I'm very excited about the proposed appointment for tonight. I think we're in very good hands that Phyllis has set us up with a good alternate in Darcy. So, thank you both for all of your service.
Any other comments, council members?
I feel compelled, just from a legally sufficient standpoint, to point out that the appointment is actually from the mayor with the advice and consent of the city council, but we will be delighted to have Phyllis Clark swear in her successor. So, we will move on to the mayoral appointment, and this would be a city clerk appointment for a term beginning November, from tonight, November 6th, 2023, through May 5th, 2025. As background, first, I'd like to acknowledge the service of Phyllis Clark. She served six terms as city clerk from 1993 to 2017. She subsequently was appointed to fill the unexpired term of city clerk Charlie Smythe in May of 2020, and then was elected city clerk in April of 2021. During her career, Phyllis served as a district director for the Central Illinois Municipal Clerks Organization, and earned designations as a registered, certified, and master municipal clerk from the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. She served as the first and, to date, the only African-American president of the Municipal Clerks of Illinois, and was appointed by the governor to the institute training committee, where she served in leadership positions to develop training materials for elected and appointed clerks in the state of Illinois. So, for your 28 years of service to the Urbana community, and your service to your profession, and your colleagues at the Municipal Clerks of Illinois, I want to sincerely thank you, Phyllis. And there is not an elected official in this room who has not been taught by Phyllis Clark. And so now, we move on to the appointment. I am asking the council to approve the appointment of the current deputy city clerk, Darcy Sandifer, to the position of city clerk for the term ending May 5th, 2025. Darcy E. Sandifer joined the city clerk's office as an administrative assistant in May 2021. She was sworn in as deputy city clerk on July 2nd, 2021. During her time working for the city, she dedicated herself to completing the comprehensive training required for graduation from the Municipal Clerks of Illinois Institute. And before joining the Urbana City Clerk's office, Ms. Sandifer served as office administrator for Cunningham Township Supervisor's Office for three years. Since 2021, she's been an active member of several professional organizations, including the Central Illinois Municipal Clerks of Illinois, the Municipal Clerks of Illinois, and the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. Notably this year, Ms. Sandifer achieved a significant recognition by earning a place among only 40 clerks from across the country on the General Code's 2023 Municipal Clerk Honor Roll. In addition to her professional accomplishments, she's nearing completion of her Bachelor of History degree from Southern New Hampshire University. In her application, she stated the following quote, "I wish to continue to serve the residents of Urbana through the clerk's office as the city clerk. As the deputy city clerk, I've performed all job duties of the office for the last two and a half years, including, but not limited to, preparing council agendas, meeting packets, meeting minutes, and maintaining the city ordinances and resolutions. During my tenure with the city, I have also attended and completed the three years of training necessary to graduate from the Municipal Clerks of Illinois Institute, making me the most qualified applicant in the history of the office. Based on my qualifications and demonstrated ability to carry out the duties of the office, my hope is to take this opportunity to expand existing services and bring a modern approach to the clerk's office." And so, it's my pleasure to bring this appointment to the Urbana City Council, and I'm asking you to move and second that appointment.
I'd like to move approval of Darcy Sandifer as circuit clerk for a term from November 6th, 2023, through May 3rd, 2025.
And for the record, that's the city clerk, not the circuit clerk.
Yeah, sorry.
Second.
Okay, moved by James Quisenberry, seconded by Sharice Hersi. Any discussion? James.
Yeah, I'd like to speak to this because I've known Darcy Sandifer for a long time. Previously, it was before we were involved in politics. It's great to see someone who is so involved in service to the community, as she has done so. And not only that, she has done everything she needs to, to be trained, to have all the tools in her tool belt to do this job. I've seen nothing but great work from her in the years that I've worked with her, being on the city council, and I'm very happy to see this appointment.
Any further discussion? Chris.
Thank you. I have decided to not use any portion of my brain to make this decision. Therefore, this decision will be what's called a no-brainer. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Congratulations, Clerk Sandifer. And I'll ask former city clerk Phyllis Clark to administer the au- oh, wait, you're still-
It's my turn.
It's your turn, yes.
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for welcoming me back as your city clerk when the need arose again. I've had quite a journey as the city clerk for Urbana. I've been all around the places, just being the face of the city of Urbana for the municipal clerks throughout the state. It has been wonderful. I've learned a lot. I've met a lot of people. I've met a lot of elected officials from Springfield. Some of those were okay, some was not. But I am just absolutely beside myself that I have had the opportunity to work with and to see to it that such a young lady as Darcy had the opportunity to go through the training for the Municipal Clerks of Illinois and to receive her certification. She is excellent. I feel good about walking out of here and leaving this seat to her because I know that she's going to take it another level up. She's got young ideas, and mine was old-fashioned, but she's got young ideas and brand-new spirit for this place. And I am so very pleased to be able to administer the oath of office to her. There's a song that I have seen many times ago. It's by Donnie McClurken that says, "When you've done all you can, you just stand." I've done all I can, and I'm going to stand. Darcy, will you stand with me, please?
And no matter what Phyllis says, she's not going to just stand. I know that. Darcy! And with no further business, before this special meeting of the Urbana City Council, we stand adjourned. This will be followed immediately by the regular committee of the whole meeting. We're going to take about a five-minute, we're going to wait about five minutes so Darcy can get some pictures with her family, and then we'll start. So, we'll start about 7:20?
No, it'll be six.
6:20, yeah, I know.
Look wherever you want. We'll work it out later. Okay, we'll get Melissa, will you?
Oh, my gosh.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I'm going to make sure I'm not in front of the microphone while we do this. I didn't have to take it the other way because of this. I can absolutely take ones. Look how cute. Adorable.
Wow, everything got quiet all of a sudden. Good evening and welcome to our City of Urbana Committee of the Whole Meeting. My name is Sharice Hersi, Ward Three Alderman, and I'm chairing the COW meeting. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Okay, I'd like a motion for the approval of minutes for the previous meetings of July 24th, 2023, August 21st, 2023, and September 5th, 2023. Do I have a motion?
So, moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Any discussion? I forgot to say that. Anybody have any discussion about any of the minutes or any substantive changes? Okay, so the motion carries. Any additions to the agenda or changes? Grace.
I would like to request that we switch items G and H tonight to do council input before the goal discussion.
Okay, I can work with that. Are there any objections? Okay. Any presentations, and we have public information, public input. Let's start with the presentations, I think, from council members Evans and Wilkin.
Madam Chair, the present presenter thought this was going to start at seven, and he is not here right now. So, I would recommend going to public input first.
Okey-dokey. Does anyone have any public input? Anyone in the audience choose to address the city council at this time, the committee of the whole, at this time now is your time to stand up and do that, and you have five minutes. There's a mic right here where you can stand. You can feel free to adjust it to your height or take it off of the stand and speak right into the mic.
Okay, does this work?
It's working.
I've prepared my remarks tonight and written them down, and I'm going to read from that because I'm afraid I'll get nervous and forget to tell you some things I want to say. Your honor and mayors, members of the city council, my name is Joanne Buddy, and I've lived in Barringer Commons since 2017. I'm currently the secretary of the Barringer Commons Homeowners Association. Our community is a unique neighborhood. We have 195 homes and condominiums and over 80 vacant lots that are still for sale. This is not a neighborhood of cookie cutter-style homes. Every home is different. We have wide streets, four lakes, and a number of walking paths. When I think back to some of the neighborhoods I looked at before I decided to live in Barringer Commons, I'm so happy I decided to live in Barringer Commons because it's a friendly neighborhood where we know each other and we take care of each other. Unfortunately, we find ourselves in a fight with city hall. On the corner of University Avenue and High Cross Road is Aldi's Grocery Store. They've been a good neighbor and made lots of concessions before being allowed to build so close to our neighborhood. They reduced their hours, built a privacy wall between them and our condominiums, and planted trees to block the noise and just to improve the beauty of the neighborhood and just provide a nice barrier. They, Aldi's, used to own an undeveloped 2.2-acre parcel of land just north of them, and they sold that property to OSF to build a convenient care facility in 2020. And that is where the problem started. In 2020, in order to approve a medical facility at that location, it was necessary to rezone that lot from a B1 neighborhood business to a B3 general business district. As a B3 district, many inappropriate uses are eligible to occupy that space. Some of those businesses include a tavern, an adult entertainment facility, a gaming facility, all of which would be inappropriate for a lot that immediately borders very close to a residential community and less than 20 feet away from some of our condos. The city planning department staff have promoted and supported a proposal by a local developer for a conditional use permit to allow the building of an unstaffed self-storage facility. Even though this lot has been zoned B3, it still does not qualify for a self-storage facility and would require a conditional use permit. That is because most storage facilities are zoned commercial or industrial. I personally visited 12 self-storage facilities in Urbana, and not one was next to a residential community. They were typically in industrial zones. In October, 31 residents that lived within 250 feet of this lot were sent a letter announcing a meeting of the zoning board of appeals on October 18th. They and other residents of Barringer Commons sent many emails, 21 in fact, objecting to the proposal as the letter directed. No emails of support were received. Many residents attended the meeting and voiced our opinion. The zoning board of appeals voted to deny the conditional use permit. Just last week, city staff informed the residents of Barringer Commons that the decision was not valid and set up a new meeting of the zoning board of appeals on November 15th that could reconsider and revote the decision. At the new meeting to reconsider the decision, the public will not be allowed to participate and present any information or facts or a valid protest. Zoning Board of Appeals members not present at the October 18th meeting will be allowed to participate and vote, even though they will hear no public input, and even though the vote was bailed because there was a quorum at the October meeting. It seems to the Urbana citizens of Barringer Commons that the planning staff seems to be twisting the process to favor the developer and to ignore the residents. They have withheld information from us, omitted details on how to file a formal protest, and actually lied to us, telling us that there was nothing we could do other than send them an email.
And so we're going to do a similar process, so it's good to hear Barringer, Barringer Commons come tonight, and I'm so glad I came to hear that because it is something that we need to resolve, and we will have some information, an updated letter coming to the council. If we need to do it before the plan commission meeting on Thursday, then we'll have to do that because we want to make sure it's a valid protest. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come and speak?
Good evening. To the mayor, council members, staff, and to my fellow citizens, I'm here in regards to Hope Village, which buttresses my neighborhood complex, which is Carver Park. I'm not here to question the efficacy of Hope Village. I fully understand that there is a need for affordable housing and for various populations to have a place to live honorably. My concern and the citizens that reside in my neighborhood is with two streets in particular, Carver Drive and Dory Miller. Those streets would lead right into Hope Village. It is our hope that you will not open those streets up to allow them to become a thoroughfare through our neighborhood. It would upset the peace of our neighborhood. And then there's the belief by some in my community, I'm not sure how valid these beliefs are, that there will be an elimination of on-street parking. And that would really hurt us because some of the driveways in our community are very, very short, and there is a need for on-street parking. So it, it is simply my hope that as you go through and work on that particular project's fruition, that we not upset the balance of things that are in that existing neighborhood of Carver Park. That, that's what I came to say. Thank you.
Um, sir, could you state your name for the record?
My name is Reverend Kent Redman.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would wish to speak?
My name is Marion Harrington, and I reside at 1204 Christmas Drive, which is adjacent to the Carver Park area. And as Dr. Redman said, we don't want to upset our neighborhood with the entryway being on Carver Park, Carver Drive. What we would like is that project to stick to where they're coming in now, which is Federal Drive. Their address is Federal Drive. Why can't they enter on Federal Drive and not upset our neighborhood? So we would like to see the entryway to Hope Village come in on Federal Drive and not Carver Drive. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address city council at this time? Okay, so is that the end of public input? Next, we have a presentation regarding reparations for African Americans in Champaign County, CU Reparations Coalition, and council members Evans and Wilkin.
Thank you, Chair. Tonight, the Champaigner Banner Reparations Coalition, a grassroots group of individuals, church representatives, and other interested parties who would like to investigate and pursue the implementation of reparations for African Americans in Champaign County. Through educational events and opportunities, researching the historical and present issues of racial injustice, and providing financial information and other resources, the Champaigner Banner Reparations Coalition seeks to distribute reparations to those harmed through institutional racism. Pastor Jeff Trask will be here tonight and is one of the leaders of this effort and hopes to build the coalition and make Champaign County a leader in raising communal awareness of racial injustice issues and ultimately see the reparations owed are given to African Americans who have suffered and continue to suffer from inequities and in all facets of society. Pastor Jeff will share the development and aspirations for the coalition and seek a collaborative effort with the city of Urbana to find creative ways to balance the scales of justice among residents of Urbana. And I might add, Pastor Jeff has hit a softball harder than I've ever seen. Pastor Jeff, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you for this opportunity to present to you tonight.
Could you pull the mic, turn it on, make sure it's on, and turn, and bring it closer to you?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you again, Chris, and for the counsel for beating with the mirror. I wanted to just give a brief presentation to you and give some room for some questions and answers. Just a little bit about me real briefly. I'm an Urbana resident, have been, been homeowner here since 2002, lived in Champaign, Urbana since 1993, wear lots of different hats. As Chris mentioned, I'm a pastor, also professor, ministered for Christian Health Center, and currently I'm in my role presenting as a leader for the Champaign Urbana Coalition's, Reparations Coalition, as Chris mentioned. Who are we? We're basically a group of individuals, churches, organizations, anybody and everybody who might be interested in the idea of looking into reparations for African Americans in Champaign County. The group is a kind of a outcrop of New Covenant Fellowship that started a internal reparations committee in its church, and from there we kind of expanded that to include a community coalition. We've just been meeting since May of 2003, so we're still pretty young and new, but we are meeting on a regular basis, and we're exploring ideas and ways that we can try to explore reparations in our area. The why, I'll ask, mention briefly, there's lots of reasons why this is important, why we should do this. Of course, we got centuries of enslavement and discrimination, prejudice, inequities, disparities, and racism, lost opportunities in land acquisition, homeownership, employment, education, fair, fair representation, and even sports. And then, of course, we got slavery, Jim Crow, mass incarceration, healthcare disparities and wealth gap, among many, many other things. Some people may say, well, why does this matter to us now? Slavery and those kind of things happened in the past. There's actually lots of different ways that the, the, the treatment of African Americans over the centuries have created disparities, but also has caused, created benefits for our country as a whole. I'll give one quick example. In the United States, we became a nation in 1776, was a brand-new country, but very quickly it raised itself into the economic scale across the world. And by 1860, it became the second high, second-largest economy in the world, only second to England. Why did that happen? Well, the United States had a cornerstone and on the cotton industry because they can produce and deliver it at a cheaper price than anyone else in the world. It's almost as if one country had most of the oil in, in, in the world at the time. By 1860, over half of the US imports came from cotton, 53% of the money that the United States got, receiving came from cotton industry. That was the beginning of the financial portfolio that the United States has that makes, makes us the wealthiest nation in the world. Sometimes we don't understand, like, how did we ever become the wealthiest nation in the world? Well, that is a major reason. And it's not just this kind of global thing when it comes to reparations. There's things here in Champaign County. Habitat for Humanity Director Chad gave us this presentation at our church about some of the issues that happen in Champaign County directly. There's, I won't read them all, but there's examples of covenants that were created in Champaign County to specifically not allow anyone but Caucasians to have homeownership in the area. This affected 774 different parcels of land, 587 of those were in the Champaign-Urbana area. I'll just read a little bit of the language here. "No part thereof will be sold or leased, either in whole or in part, to or permitted to be occupied as owner or tenant by any person or persons out, not of the Caucasian race." There's other statistics locally that reinforce this particular issue. In 1951, there were 70 public housing units built for whites and 70 units built for blacks. However, 21% of the money to build those units went towards the, the black units, and the other 79% went towards the white units. We also had problems in 1965 when African-American students from University of Illinois couldn't find places to stay because only 20% of the owners of residence would be, was willing to sign a pledge of non-discrimination. I left the map on, on, in your packet as well. What that map shows are the different current places where different African-Americans live. The red represents African-Americans in Champaign-Urbana. You can see the other racial groups, but you can see there's very strong concentrations of African-Americans in Champaign-Urbana area, and that is a, a result of some of that discrimination I just mentioned. So our group, we've kind of come to a, a, a method in terms of how we want to try to encourage the idea of reparations. So the first thing is education. Once you just even learn a little bit about what has happened and what currently still happens in our country with, when it comes to this issue, you realize that it goes to a saying, I always say that, it's not, the most you can do is, is the least you can do. So education is a huge part of that. The second part is acknowledgement, and what we mean by that is, there's lots of good causes, there's lots of good programs, there's lots of good things to give money to and dedicate resources towards. However, we want to make sure that we are particularly acknowledging the, the injustice and the different things that have happened to African-Americans over this, over time and currently, and, and really call that out to acknowledge that we are doing this effort because of these, these past harms, the harms that I've mentioned earlier and more. And then the third piece of this is actual reparations. Without some actual action, then it just becomes words. And so for us, all three of these things are critical. You have to have the education, the acknowledgement, and the actual reparations. So if I get to the, the ask of the council here, there's a couple of different things. Lots of towns and communities have established commissions to study the history of their, of their areas about discrimination, other racial injustice practices over the years. Another thing you can do is support the educational efforts of our coalition. We actually have Robin Rue Simmons come into New Covenant Fellowship Thursday, November 16th of this month. She is the alder, former alderwoman in Evanston, Illinois, who led the efforts to get reparations done in, in that area. So I would encourage all of you to be able to attend that if you can. And then finally, explore, research, develop, implement any kind of form of repair for African-Americans in, in Urbana. This can be done in form of policy changes, new municipal codes, rules, and guidelines, monetary payments, various forms. In Evanston, they had a $25,000 grant, if you will, that went towards African-Americans in their, in their community. It was sponsored or paid for through marijuana tax sales. The city of Evanston got us a million dollars a year for 10, 10 years is what they committed to their reparation efforts. And then another thing I would think will be very critical is to, if we were to do something, to have metrics. A lot of times, things are done, but there actually no measures to know if you actually made progress in those things. I was noticing in February 2021 that City of Urbana signed a resolution, and section two of that resolution talks about the City of Urbana recognizes that it will take additional effort to align on actions with, with their aspirations. And it also says the city resolves to recognize and value diversity in its policies, personnel, and investment, and so on and so forth. And so our group and many, I'm sure others will love to work with the council, work with the city to try to, try to promote those activities. Some ideas, there's lots of different things you can do. That's one of the things our group has kind of discovered, that there's many places you can invest in this, in this effort. But again, the acknowledgement part is a key component, but just some quick ideas. Housing assistance programs similar to Evanston could be put in place. Educational opportunities, our church, New Covenant Fellowship, the reparations group is investing money into African-American families who have attended the church and, and their children and grandchildren, and putting it in an educational fund, starting off when they're, like, my grandbaby would be one of the kids, when, when they're going to college, so they have money for school. Support health organizations that have programs specifically focused on healthcare inequities and disparities. We've had a long history of African-Americans having worse healthcare than other groups. And then we also can encourage vendors to utilize African-Americans right from their own businesses as well. At this point, I'll, I'll close and, and ask if you have any questions. I know I went through a lot real quickly.
Shandra?
Could, could you repeat the November 16th information again?
Yes, it's November 16th, the, the event starts at 7:00 PM, located at New Covenant Fellowship, 124 West White Street in Champaign.
Thank you.
And the, the main speaker is Robin Rue Simmons for it.
Are there any more questions? Or Dr. Trask? Grace?
Thank you. Thanks so much for the presentation. I was, it sounds like, but I just asked to clarify, that your organization might be interested in being involved in kind of thinking about any, implementing any of the ideas that you're recommending? Is that the case?
Absolutely. Yeah, they're, they're, they're pulled together, people who want to do something in, in this area, so if the city is, wants to do something, we're definitely more than happy to join forces. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I would just like to make a comment because I was the author of the, of the resolution that you're talking about, but also, and, and although you, you said the, the lady from Evanston is going to be coming here, she, uh, because I used hers as a template, actually. The, my other question that I have is, you've been, you've been organized since May. I wish I had known about something before tonight.
Okay.
You know, that's my raison d'etre. I would think, I would have thought that I would have known something more than just before I sought on the agenda. So I would appreciate you contacting me.
Absolutely. Yeah, we're just a group of folks, just kind of gathered together. We have about close to 50 on our email list right now. We have about 10, 12 people that meet every, every month so far, so just kind of getting kicked off, but we would definitely put you, put you on the list.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
And it also says the city resolves to recognize and value diversity in its policies, personnel, and investment, and so on and so forth. And so our group, and I'm sure others, will love to work with the council, work with the city to try to promote those activities. Some ideas, there's lots of different things you can do. That's one of the things our group has kind of discovered, that there's many places you can invest in this effort. But again, the acknowledgement part is a key component. But just some quick ideas, housing assistance programs similar to Evanston could be put in place. Educational opportunities, our Church New Covenant Fellowship, the reparations group is investing money into African-American families who've attended the church and their children and grandchildren, and putting it in an educational fund, starting off when they're, like, my grandbaby would be one of the kids, when they're going to college, so they have money for school. Support healthcare organizations that have programs specifically focused on healthcare inequities and disparities. We've had a long history of African-Americans having worse healthcare than other groups. And then we also can encourage vendors to utilize African-Americans right from their own businesses as well. At this point, I'll close and ask if you have any questions. I know I went through a lot real quickly.
Shandra.
Could you repeat the November 16th information again?
Yes, it's November 16th. The event starts at 7:00 PM, located at New Covenant Fellowship, 124 West White Street in Champaign.
Thank you.
And the main speaker is Robin Rue Simmons for it.
Are there any more questions? Or Dr. Trask? Grace.
Thank you. Thanks so much for the presentation. It was, it sounds like, but I just asked to clarify, that your organization might be interested in being involved in kind of thinking about implementing any of the ideas that you're recommending?
Absolutely. Yeah, they're pulled together, people who want to do something in this area. So if the city is, wants to do something, we're definitely more than happy to join forces. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I would just like to make a comment because I was the author of the, of the resolution that you're talking about. But also, and although you said the lady from Evanston is going to be coming here, because I used hers as a template, actually. My other question that I have is, you've been, you've been organized since May. I wish I had known about something before tonight.
Okay.
You know, that's my raison d'etre. I would think, I would have thought that I would have known something more than just before I sought on the agenda. So I would appreciate you contacting me.
Absolutely. Yeah, we're just a group of folks, just kind of gathered together. We have about close to 50 on our email list right now. We have about 10, 12 people that meet every month so far. So just kind of getting kicked off, but we would definitely put you, put you on the list.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on. Staff reports. Any staff reports tonight?
We do have a staff report.
Yes, I know we do have.
From the police department.
Yes. Our new Chief Boone. Presentation and our crime update. And before you start, Chief Boone, let me just say I want to apologize to those that are sitting in the gallery. Our screen up here is not, is not working, but I hope that you all can see information from that screen there. Okay, thank you.
All right. So first of all, thank you all for.
Is your mic on?
It is.
Okay.
All right. Thank you all for affording me the opportunity to speak to you all. Greetings, Madam Mayor, members of council. When you hired me some months ago, I promised you a 21st-century police department. We are slowly but surely starting the process to be just that. I met with several members of the community during my short visit here, and most spoke fairly highly of the police department, the women and men of the Urbana Police Department, to a great deal of respect. I can tell you, in my movements throughout the city, I am often contacted, whether it's through communications, face-to-face, or email, or something of that sort, about the compassionate and professionalism that the officers continuously display. Now, I can tell you from, coming from a large department, one doesn't always know every officer. Being here, which is clearly a smaller department, I've gotten to know most, if not all, of the officers, and I've seen their actions, and it's been very remarkable. Now, as we go through this presentation, you'll see that, based on my experience, I think the officers have done a outstanding job with very limited resources. Resources that have made them very reactive. We're not situated to be preemptive. And I think that will be highlighted as, and my staff go through this presentation. I want to expand upon what a 21st-century police department looks like. First and foremost, how we go about managing crime in their process and what that looks like. Secondly, technology. In order for us to be a 21st-century police department, we must embrace technology. It's required in certain locations throughout this city, which will be backed up through data. I'm going to show you data that's going to challenge you to take a position. In addition to that, we have work to do. Now, I spoke fairly highly of these officers, but conversely, there is a segment of the community here in Urbana didn't feel the same way. Let me speak with big teeth. There are some, underscore some, members of the African-American community didn't feel the same way, which is why we're going to take a very, very robust and intentional positioning and being very forward-facing through community outreach. Now, my leadership theory rests upon elevating the bench. I would like to come before you quarterly, and each time I come before you, there will be someone of my staff presenting with me because it's important that I shape them to be where I am today. So to my left is Deputy Chief Searls, who had done a fantastic job in getting me ready, understanding the culture of the Urbana Police Department, as well as the city. There's always a concern when you come from the outside that your number two will hide stuff from you. He hadn't done that, he hadn't done that at all. He's been very, very amenable to me. To my right is Melissa Herdrin. She is our crime analyst. She has done a fantastic job. You'll see some of the graphs she's put together, and I put a little pressure on them. But I think you will have a better understanding of the challenges of the women and men of this department, of this city, particularly some of our underserved communities. I don't like saying underserved. I like to say at opportunity. I don't like saying at risk, at opportunity, because there's opportunity for all to get involved. Not necessarily pointing fingers, that's easy to do. If you point fingers, I'm going to give you something to do. We're going to do it together. With that, I'm going to yield to Melissa.
We're going to present you with a lot of crime statistics tonight, and I want to explain the methodology so everyone understands what it is that we're talking about. The information that we're presenting only includes crimes known to the police. This normally starts with a 911 call, but can sometimes include officer-initiated activities that reveal crimes. When a crime is substantiated, it is recorded on a police report and entered into our records management system. There are over 900 different incident codes that an officer can enter when they're authoring a police report. These will include things like violations of the Illinois compiled statutes, the Illinois Vehicle Code, and Urbana City Ordinance violations. The police report is completed by an officer, reviewed by a sergeant, and then reviewed by a police services representative, where it's then flooded into our records management system. It's finally reviewed as part of the case management process by the Criminal Investigations Division. I then query the data, and that's what I'm presenting here in the aggregate form. So when you're looking at, at the date ranges, it's important to note that we are looking at year-to-date comparisons for January 1st through October 31st, 2023, and we're comparing it to the exact same timeframe in 2022. So you're looking at only the first 10 months of the year, so that we're doing an apple-to-apple, apples-to-apples comparison from year to year. I will say that later in the presentation, when we're looking at shootings, we're doing everything from 2021 all the way up through Halloween 2023 for a full picture of the shootings. But when we're doing the year-to-year comparison for the individual crimes, we're looking at strictly year-to-date, first 10 months of the year, '21, '22, '23.
Could you pull your mic closer?
Sure.
Thank you.
So for the purposes of this presentation, we're looking at specific crimes. We're looking at what's, what's known as the Part 1 offenses defined by the FBI under the Uniform Crime Reporting Program, with just a few caveats. So I'm going to go line by line and just kind of outline what it is that we're talking about with each of these types of crime. So homicide is the willful killing of one person by another. And we'll note that in this year, there was, one of the three homicides was a justifiable homicide, but it's included here nonetheless. Rape is defined as a sexual assault involving non-consensual penetration. Now, these numbers might appear lower than what we've previously reported because I recently received guidance from reporting rape from the Illinois State Police. Because both Carl Emergency Room and OSF Emergency Rooms are located within our jurisdiction, anytime a sexual assault kit is collected or a sexual assault is reported to a mandated reporter and the victim is remaining anonymous, Urbana Police will respond and take the report. In these cases where the victim is remaining anonymous and no information is provided on the location of the assault, if UPD can't substantiate that the crime occurred in Urbana, these reports will not be listed in our official numbers. Nothing will change, nothing will change procedurally, but our rape numbers will now be reflective of crimes that have occurred in Urbana. The next violent crime is robbery, where someone takes, takes or attempts to take something from someone else by force or threat of force. And finally, under violent crime is assault and battery. This is the attack or threatened attack by one person upon another. These can include aggravated assault and battery, which is the purpose of inflicting severe bodily harm or injury, which is usually accompanied by a weapon. There's simple assault and battery, where no weapon was used or threatened and no serious injury resulted. And stalking and intimidation are also included in this category. Now, on the weekly crime statistics that you see here, I break the assault and battery into three broad categories. There's domestic, there's non-fatal shootings, and non-domestic, non-shootings. More than half of our assault and battery offenses involve a domestic relationship of some sort, involving family members or household members. These can be current or former spouses, current or former dating partners, parents, children, grandchildren, caregivers, et cetera. Non-fatal shootings include all substantiated shots fired reports. These incidents are recorded as confirmed shootings under several circumstances, as long as there is evidence of a shooting. And non-fatal shootings include shootings both with and without injuries. And then the non-domestic and non-shooting assault and battery incident is anything that falls outside of those two definitions. These can include assault and battery with, with people with relationships like classmates, or neighbors, or acquaintances, or friends, or strangers. And then at the bottom of the sheet is property crime. Burglary would be breaking or entering, the unlawful entry of a structure to commit a felony or a theft. And theft is the unlawful taking of property from the possession or construction, or constructive possession of another. These typically include things like retail theft, thefts of bicycles, theft from motor vehicle. It's generally just taking something that doesn't belong to you without force. Motor vehicle theft is the theft or attempted theft of motor vehicle. And then arson is the willful or malicious burning, or attempted to burn the personal property of another. This is now standardized information that we're talking about every week in our crime data meetings with command staff, and you'll hear more about this later from Deputy Chief Searls. As you may or may not be aware, we transitioned records management systems in February of this past year, which involved a significant modification to how I do my job. And I think I'll catch all of you with the ages here. This is essentially going from Windows 98 to Windows 11. The data that was migrated from our old system into the new system required quite a bit of cleaning, standardization, so that when I was running the queries, they were pulling comparable information. It was a monumental lift, involving a lot of, a lot of helpers. But I'm satisfied now with the data quality of the legacy data, at least for the past few years. The query system is also significantly different. It's not nearly as customizable as the system that we had, but Tyler has been open. Tyler's the records management system. They've been open to making some improvements. So when Chief Boone was announced as our new chief of police, I reached out to his previous department at Norfolk, Virginia. They have an excellent crime analysis unit, and they've been incredibly helpful in providing examples of their analysis products. I also visited a few analysts in area departments and the Chicago Police Department Strategic Initiatives Division to observe their processes and bring some best practices back home to Urbana. And after several iterations of the weekly crime data meeting, what you're looking at here on the screen is a big-picture overview of where we are as a department with serious crime, both with long-term trends and with potential short-term patterns. And we recently posted a position for a criminal intelligence analyst that will work side-by-side with me and work with the Criminal Investigations Division to analyze criminal activity trends and patterns. And more information will be forthcoming on this position and how we'll utilize them in the overall crime management process. Thank you.
Okay, so what you're looking at is a year-to-date Part 1 violent crime. In the upper right-hand corner, it kind of breaks down what's going on in that map. So year-to-date, we have three homicides. Historically, Urbana homicides are driven by gang-related or gang-involved at 33%. Domestic-related at 26%. And I want you to really focus in on our domestic violent crime. And I'll speak to that later. It's quite alarming, but we'll get to that. Thirdly, robbery at 20%. Fistfight to gun, 13%, and accidental, 6%. So that, that's kind of what the narrative is as it relates to homicides. How they start, how they occur, as well as shootings. Year-to-date, we have eight shootings with injuries. And again, those are driven by the same premises, as I just stated, with respect to homicide. Year-to-date, we have 29 shootings without injury. Don't minimize that, okay? Someone pulled the trigger, someone had intentions, and if some of these folks could shoot, we would have some serious problems. We have non-rapes. Historically, at a percentage of 96%, our offenders are known to our victims. At 4%, it's generally the offender is not known to our victim. Domestic battery, that I spoke about earlier. As you look at the map, you see the broken heart symbol indicating domestic battery. We have 361. Historically, when you look at these incidents, three-fourths of them are involving individuals that are known to each other. Of note, going back almost three years, we've had a little over 1,200 incidents of domestic battery. There have been 60 residents, 60, that we have responded to three or more times. Now, folks, this don't make sense to me, okay? This is why data is important. We can speak emotionally about a lot of things, but data will point you to the right direction. It makes no sense with the resources that we have with respect to law enforcement to continuously go to these locations over and over and over and over. That's not the only example. There's more. With respect to assault and battery, generally, we're talking about something that could lead to a shooting, but it does not. It's basically a fisticuff or someone being struck with an object. Generally, it's in the same locations. It's folks doing the very best they can. Unfortunately, the conflict resolution is not there. Slide four. So basically, what you're seeing there is a trend of everything we just spoke about. And you see it trending down, which is consistent with the national norm. And that kind of mirrors most cities that look like us. Slide five. So I look at crime as a public health issue. When you look at this particular map and you look at the highlighted area, I spoke earlier about, I don't like to label locations at risk. I like to say at opportunity. Because those locations didn't get like that on their own. There was systematic processes, oversight, things of that nature that created some of this. It's nobody's fault in this room. It's just history. That's a fact. So the way I like to address this is an all-hands approach that our city administrator took the lead on. We went out to this location October 27th. It involved the fire department, community development, public works, as well as other executive departments. Our goal is to systematically address the issues as we see it, report on it, follow up on it, see what the outcomes are. The goal is to bring awareness to this location. As you look at the map, you'll see that the intensity of activity is there in the far-right lower corner, but as you spread out, it gets lighter. The goal is to make that. The goal is to make that location healthy. If you make that location healthy, we are hoping for cause and effect for some of those other areas that are somewhat shaded. Next map. And this is merely information regarding the highlighted location that you just saw. There's been 113 police report Part 1 violent crimes. As I stated earlier, a large portion of those are domestic battery. Again, folks that are under some challenging situations, trying to do the very best that they can. There's been seven shootings in that location, one fatal, six non-fatal, some with injuries, some without. Be, when I first came here, of course, I don't know the area that well. And there had been a shooting in that area. And I asked Deputy Chief Searls to take me to that location because I had an idea what it would look like, based on my experience in Norfolk. And it looked exactly like I thought it would look. High weeds, litter, drug paraphernalia, people roaming around without any hope. So the goal is to make their living environment safe. The goal is to improve their quality of life. And the goal is, if that's effective, it would only help the city. Next slide, please. So what we're looking at is Part 1 property crime. Arson, that's really, it's a big deal when you look at it. You see it in seven incidents. But, you know, every individual has been identified. Most of it is, some of it, I should say, is homeless individuals trying to stay warm, lighting things on fire. There is one domestic issue in that count, as well as some other domestic issues. Burglary. And when we look at the historical overview with respect to Urbana's burglaries, 46% are non-residential, meaning a garage or something of that sort. 29% involve force, meaning, you know, a door was kicked in, a window probably opened, something of that ilk. But really surprisingly, 71% of these homes are left unlocked. 71% of these homes are left unlocked. So again, this is a historical overview of the last three years. And that's kind of what my staff and I are going through, trying to identify what's the narrative of each crime and what's driving it. This is how you go about surgically addressing crime issues. Motor vehicle theft, again, folks are leaving their vehicles unlocked. Vehicles running with keys in the car, things of that nature. We're trying to educate folks once we identify certain pockets where that is happening. There's a technique I learned back east. In fact, a lot of techniques I learned back east we're going to be employing here. And lastly, theft. This is huge. It accounts for theft from a person, I should say. Accounts for 31% of our theft in Urbana. Retail theft is about a quarter of our incidents. And burglary theft from a vehicle is about 15%. Next. So that's just capturing what I just reported on. Again, it's following the national trends. You'll see in 2021, you know, during the pandemic, people were home. Therefore, burglaries were less. So there's nothing unusual about that. Again, that's in line with national trends. Next. Shootings. These are shootings, as Melissa stated earlier, from 2021 to October 31 this year. There's been 142 shootings, shootings with injuries. There's been 33 homicides. There have been 14. I spoke about earlier about what drives violent crime, particularly gun violence in this city. And when it comes to how do you address that? How do you address that? One, whatever actions you take, it has to be legal within the Constitution. Two, it has to be ethical. Is, do we have a moral obligation to address it? I think you would say yes. And number three, is it democratic? Meaning, whatever approach we take, do we involve and include the community? I know there's a lot of conversation surrounding police deployment, LPRs, things of that nature. But as a police chief with some experience, when I look at that, something has to be done. Okay? So again, is it legal? Is it ethical? Do we have a responsibility to address that? I say we do. I say there are things out there that could afford us to address that effectively. You know, I'm a religious person, but thoughts and prayers won't fix this. We need action. When I think of most cities that have this type of map, they have resources that they are able to deploy to address it. We, quite frankly, we do not. We don't have the manpower nor the resources. So we have to make a decision as an organization, as a city, as a community, what's best for these folks. And these folks primarily are African-Americans. Next. So when you look at 2021, we had 10 homicides, shootings with injuries, we had 18 shots fired. With no one hit, we had 87. All those are important, whether anyone was hit or not. Because as I said earlier, if these guys could shoot, it would be a lot worse. When you look at the clearance rate for 2021, our clearance rate was abysmal. No fault of the officers. They just did not have the proper staffing to effectively address it in a timely matter. That's the truth. That's the issues. That's the issue with any type of crime when you don't have the proper staffing to address it. You just get eaten by the data, and that's what happened there. So the national crime clearance rate is 60%. This particular year, they're in the 20, 20%. We owe it to those victims and their family to do everything that we can to ensure that we bring justice to those who pull that trigger. All right, 2022, we had three homicides, six with injuries. And again, the same things that I said earlier about shots fired, no one hit, 35. Same thing I said, folks, about 2021. Except, the incidents were smaller, therefore, our clearance rate was higher. We do well when things are small. We've got some very hard-working detectives that do the very best that they can. Folks, I'm going to say this, and I say this with all honesty. They have made this department work from a 1990 format. They've made it work. I'm not pointing fingers. I'm just stating the obvious based on my experience. I'm going to say this again. These officers, I'm going to support them when they adhere to training and policy. I don't care how bad it looks. If they adhere to training and policy, I'm going to support them. But conversely, I'm going to hold them accountable when it looks bad and they did not adhere to training and policy. And my record reflects that. Next. So when we're talking about gun homicide victims for the last two and a half, three years, the race, we have 15 individuals, African-American. The sex, we had 13 individuals that were male, two female, three 17-years-and-under, four 18 to 24-years-of-age, five 25 to 39-years-of-age, and three 40 and over. And what you'll see is the victim, as well as the offender, they tend to be in the same age bracket. Next. We're looking at gun homicide known offenders, same-year span. We had 11 African-Americans. We had 11 that were male African-Americans. And again, with respect to the age range, it tends to mirror whether or not the individual was a victim or a suspect. Next. So we're talking about demographics of shootings with injuries. We have 38 that were African-American, and two that were Hispanic, and another two that were non-white. With respect to gender, 33 are male, and eight are female. And again, it sounded like a broken record here, but generally, the victim and the offender, the age of the two, in terms of the victim who pulled the trigger, generally between one and two age years of the same age. Next. And lastly, shooting with injuries known offenders. 11 were black, one was white. And with respect to gender, 11 were male, one female. Now, folks, these graphs looks like Norfolk's graph. Same demographics, same challenges from challenging communities, whether it's Detroit, Chicago, it looks the same. You know, I can go back 10 years, and it's going to look the same. I can go back 20 years, and it's going to look the same. What does that say about us as a community? You know, we can pontificate and grandstand, but I'm all about the business. And if you don't have any solutions or help trying to get any solutions, no disrespect, I'll entertain what you got to say, but I'm moving on. I'm all about the business. So we have a blind spot as it relates to community relations, as it relates to policies, as it relates to holding officers accountable with respect to use of force. So I'm going to yield now the remainder of my time to Deputy Chief Searls.
About some new Urbana Police Department initiatives. We're going to start with the UPD Crime Data Meeting that Melissa just showed you a sheet on. So in pursuit of enhancing the clarity and user-friendliness of crime data, our department has embarked on a path of standardizing crime management tool. The current iteration of this crime management tool is presented in this slide. As Melissa detailed, the specific crime data snapshot compares the incidence of violent and property crimes year-to-date in 2022 against the corresponding period in 2023. This comparative analysis allows us to pinpoint any noteworthy variations in reported crime during these identical timeframes. Additionally, we track a rolling two-week metric for reported crimes in these same categories. The purpose behind that is so we can potentially identify crime trends early so that we can strategically respond. Again, those categories that we track are homicide, rape, robbery, various forms of assault and battery, burglary, theft, burglary from a motor vehicle, motor vehicle theft, and arson. Again, the upper section of the table pertains to violent crime, while the lower section focuses on property crime. And the combination of these two segments encompasses what we refer to as a total crime landscape. Transition towards a more structured crime management tool began with the appointment of Chief Boone and was further accelerated with the implementation of our records management system. Our previous system, which you know as ARMS, heavily relied on the distribution of paper reports across the department and other criminal justice entities, including the State's Attorney's Office. The introduction of our new record management system, Tyler RMS, represents a complete shift towards a digital-only ecosystem where reports are authored, reviewed, and disseminated electronically. This transformative shift necessitated a shift from the prior ad hoc review process of paper reports to a more systematic and standardized methodology. The strategic shift empowers us to analyze the information within police reports more consistently, ultimately uncovering patterns and insights in a more structured manner. So what does this look like? What is the workflow? Our new crime management tool is underpinned by a well-defined workflow. It commences with our crime analyst. The process involves a thorough extraction and verification of all reports within a predefined timeframe. Subsequently, the Criminal Investigations Division Lieutenant scrutinizes the data, identifying patterns related to geographic locations and the modus operandi involved in each incident. The synthesized information is then presented to the entire command staff to ensure a shared understanding of the types, locations, and nature of crimes being perpetrated. Patrol Division Lieutenant's leverage this information to formulate and tailor deployment strategies for patrol officers in response to the data. These strategies are communicated to the entire department, fostering a collective approach to addressing ongoing crime. After a specified time period, the crime analyst revisits the data, presenting it to the command staff to gauge the impact and outcomes of these strategies. This process is designed to be continuous, iterative, and ongoing. Our next noteworthy initiative is accreditation. The fundamental objective behind accreditation is to employ evidence-based best practices to develop and refine department policies and procedures. Accreditation comes in two forms generally. National accreditation, specifically the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, or CALEA, and state-level accreditation, specifically the Illinois Law Enforcement Accreditation Program, or ILIP. CALEA is a time-intensive process, typically taking around three years to complete and requiring at least one dedicated full-time employee. CALEA is also costly, with higher upfront and ongoing costs to maintain accreditation. Conversely, ILIP can be accomplished within an estimated six to nine months, at a cost ranging between $1,500 and $2,000. The Urbana Police Department has made the strategic decision to pursue state-level accreditation through ILIP. We have already submitted the application to ILIP. We've been accepted to the accreditation program and secured the necessary software, Power DMS, to manage the accreditation process. Our goal is to initiate the accreditation process, preparation process, and then within the next month, following a consultation meeting with an accreditation specialist from Power DMS. Our next initiative is centered around the collection of data-related use-of-force incidents. As previously discussed, the old methodology for collecting use-of-force data relied on paper reports and manual data collection, which proved to be time-consuming and introduced the potential for human error. Our new approach employs a standardized form, mandatory questions, and categorization of use-of-force incidents to ensure consistent data recording. The standardization process incorporates a well-defined workflow, starting with the officer involved in the use-of-force incident, completing the standardized department-approved form. The form then progresses through multiple successive levels of supervision, ensuring compliance with policies and procedures. Any incident not in alignment with policy or best practice is referred to the Use of Force Committee and ultimately, the Chief of Police for further review. The adoption of standardized forms guarantees a clear record of who reviewed each incident, when, and determinations they have each made. Our next initiative is a concerted effort regarding strategic planning. While strategic planning has been practiced in the past, the new approach will align more closely with 21st-century policing model. The six pillars of the President's Task Force in 21st-Century Policing, ranging from building trust and legitimacy to officer wellness and safety, will be used as a framework for tracking department initiatives. However, this strategic planning process will also incorporate insights from other programs and philosophies, such as the NAACP Ten Shared Principles and the Act of Bystandership for Law Enforcement Program, or ABL. This comprehensive approach will guide our initiatives to better align with the evolving needs of our community. Another important initiative that we are undertaking involves the Residential and Business Security Survey. The aim of these surveys is to bolster the safety and security of our community by evaluating the physical security at residential and business locations. These surveys serve multiple purposes, including crime prevention, education, community engagement, crime deterrence, and community empowerment. The surveys enable us to identify The surveys enable us to identify vulnerabilities, provide guidance on best security practices, reducing the chances of the location being a target for crime, and fostering positive relationships between the law enforcement, between law enforcement and the community. Our next initiative is the establishment of the Office of Community Relations. Chief Boone and national consulting firm Barry Dunn recognize the need for more meaningful community engagement within and by the Urbana Police Department. This intentionality has led to the development of the Office of Community Relations within the Administration Division, which was formerly known as the Services Division. They are being tasked with cultivating police community relationships through non-law enforcement interactions. This office will be staffed by both sworn and professional personnel, who will work to plan and lead community engagement initiatives that go beyond traditional policing responsibilities. The final initiative that I'm gonna discuss this evening is the Clergy Patrol. The concept of the Clergy Patrol, as developed by Chief Boone in Norfolk, Virginia, involves volunteer members of the local clergy joining UPD patrol officers on Friday and Saturday evenings from twelve PM to twelve, to twelve midnight. These clergy members provide support and counseling to victims of crime once the scene is secured, allowing for a more holistic approach to community policing. This initiative not only fosters deeper community ties, but also enhances community understanding of ongoing police efforts. I must also mention that the Urbana Police Department, and this is not on the slide, are also in the beginning stages of developing an additional community program centered in barber shops, focusing on the relationship with the, the relationships with the African American community and the Urbana Police Department. More details on that and other initiatives will be forthcoming at a later time.
Folks, I, I know that was a lot of information. That concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Boone. Are there any questions for Chief Boone? James?
Just, just a quick question about the statistics. For, for vehicle theft, in that special category of theft, I assume those are vehicle thefts that don't involve force and that those that involve force would be up in the robbery section?
So vehicular hijacking would be under robbery, but motor vehicle theft is when someone steals a car that doesn't belong to them, or attempts to steal a car that doesn't belong to them. There's another thing that's under there that's burglary for motor vehicle, where somebody breaks into a car and then takes the belongings. And in, like, ninety-eight percent of the cases, people's car doors are unlocked, so locking car doors.
But if there's no conflict involved, it's in that property theft area?
Correct.
If there's a conflict involved with, between people, it's in the top part?
It goes up to robbery.
Okay, thank you.
Next, anyone? Mary Alice.
Thank you for all the lovely stats. I was wondering if you would be willing to share, you said that you have a meeting once, once a week, it sounds like, in terms of reviewing the previous two weeks and the existing two weeks, sorry, reviewing the crime stats and how they relate to previous crime stats at the same time period. So, my question to you is, if you could give us an example, one or two examples of what that would look like, what would the response look like? Let's just use auto theft, for example. So how would your command staff address that? What strategies would they use?
So, depending on the type of crime, let me just give you the genesis of it, because that's the only way I can really calibrate your, your question. I was uncomfortable when I first got here, to be quite frank with you, with our process and how we address crime. I thought it was somewhat dated and slow. For an example, if there was vehicle theft, to use your example, and let's say, three vehicles were stolen from a particular street, we call that a pattern. However, our old process did not allow us to readily recognize that. So, now, it's a collective effort between CID, Criminal Investigative Department, as well as Patrol, as well as Melissa, where we daily look at information, trying to recognize those clusters. So, within that two-week window, is your opportunity to, one, avert said crime or making apprehension? Whereas before, it was months before, well, I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth, but it wasn't quick enough. So, the, the methodology within that two-week window is where the work is done. Our challenge, though, is when we recognize clusters or patterns, we don't have enough personnel to effectively deploy people to those incidents. So in order for this to work, we, we have to have the personnel. We, we don't have it right now. With shootings, if you have multiple shootings in a particular area, we should be able to say, okay, we recognize a cluster of shootings on a Wednesday at nine PM at this location, let's be ready for it. We don't have the personnel. So, historically, and, and please don't beat me up for this, we've been reactive. We have not had technology or personnel to be preemptive. And that's the reality.
Well, I think, basically, what you're talking about is geocoding, right? Taking the, the location of the incident and looking at how, how many repetitions there are of a very similar incident. And so I guess I would say that it's a big leap forward for us to be looking at this data very quickly, rather than at the end of the year, throughout different time. I know, especially for domestic violence, that's a big issue, is that there are houses that are called multiple times and the police show up, and there's really never any resolution for that. I've been told in the past to make sure to let the police department know that it's happened at that same location a couple of times, because we weren't able to actually take that information. So, I think it's an excellent step forward in terms of us addressing the crime in Urbana. Thank you.
Jaya?
Yeah, thank you. This is very helpful information. I, I do want to speak, actually, a little bit to the domestic violence piece, because I think, you, you said something that I want to make sure that, that our community's understanding is very normal, and that there are often calls to the same residents multiple times, as Mary Alice just brought up as well. As someone who's made a career out of working with folks who've been impacted by interpersonal violence, I think it's important to note that that is very common, that on average, it takes seven times that someone tries to leave an abusive relationship before they leave. And so while we're tracking this data, we're seeing that pattern, I also want to make sure that we're kind of recognizing that that is very common, because people don't get into relationships assuming they're gonna be abusive. It's often very difficult to leave, and there is a very good reason why a lot of times we're getting called back out to the same locations, and that it is urgent that we are responding, because often that violence escalates over time.
Chandra?
I kind of want to go back to, you mentioned the, the all-hands, and you went out to a particular area. What was the outcome of that, or did you see any results or changes? Of course, it's, if it's only one time and, and one instance, but how do you see that moving forward?
That's, that's an excellent ques- question. So, we, we've only had one phase. The first phase required going out there, making observations with respect to things you can take care of right away. The second phase is capturing information of those action items that you cannot address right away, which will require us to come together and formulate a plan for those action items that were not addressed. For an example, if we noted a stairwell that was problematic and presented a safety issue, most definitely, we have to follow up with that. So the way it works is, we have observation, we capture data, come back, analyze, what have, give it two weeks, what have you done within this two-week window? Okay, you've met half of your goal, let's go back out, see what's been done. The beauty of this is, when the community sees something different, property owners tend to show up, and they did that particular day as well. In fact, one of them spoke to me directly, wanted to know what was going on. And when folks know that you care and that you're watching, they'll do their part. So, it's not a one-off, okay? This will require multiple visits, multiple inspection. We need the support of nonprofit and profit alike to ensure that that community is healthy. It, it's very intentional, and it, and it takes about six months for you to see any meaningful results.
And what was some of the residents' feedback or, I guess, reaction to your presence?
It was extremely positive. One of, one of the young ladies out there approached, City Administrator Carol Mitten, and said, "Thank you for doing this, thank you for coming out here, thank you for not making it a spectacle by inviting the media." There were folks readily complaining-
... server, is that, I don't remember what the, what the, I don't have the vernacular for it. "We would like for it to be published directly to a website, to have it be interactive, where you can, you can click through different things and have it update fairly regularly." The old system was me doing it in a PDF, and that was not time, time-friendly. So we were hoping to have that in June, but the, there's been a bit of a delay.
So, Mr. Evans, I don't know if you recall, we've, I've provided some information in the previous months about this. What Melissa's talking about was a very arduous process. Formatting and developing is pages upon pages of, of work. And there is a better way to do it, and that is what we're going towards, which is something where we can upload the data so it appears on our website and is more modern, not a PDF. So, we're just in that, that, that transformation phase. We've got the data, it's just a matter of getting to our new website, which city staff is working on. We've, the chief and I have had meetings with the project manager on that for the police department side, what, two weeks ago? So, it's coming. I know it's not fast enough, we're sorry, but we'll get it there, promise.
Sounds good. It, it also sounds like, once this system's in place, the 2023 report can be there and heard. That's great. I think we're going in the right direction there. Is there any way that we can get the number of arrests for each crime listed in the, in the wards, or in the data? We can certainly provide that. We don't have the capacity with respect to manpower, quite frankly, to get you that in a timely fashion. We're working on that. I, I know that's important. I know you want to know those that have offended, where are they from, things of that nature. That, that certainly helps us with respect to how we go about addressing crime, I get that. But right now, the most important information that I think is important is what you've heard thus far, but we'll get you that. With respect to the domestic violence, I agree with everything you said. I come from an environment such as that. What I'm trying to do is bring awareness to the community that that occurs. Also, what I'm trying to do is to develop an actionable partnership with whomever else may be intimately involved with that as well. Okay, thank you. And also, and again, this might be for later, but getting the number of calls for service in each ward. I, I think that's an easier lift. Yeah. Okay. I, I don't want to give you a timeline, but we'll try to give it to you as soon as possible. These are just ideas. Or one of the other things I'd like to get to you all, because I, I want to be very forward-facing, on a monthly basis, I want you to see what's going on in your ward, and perhaps we can attach the calls for services as well, as well as some highlighting specific things that may be going on, so that it's more palatable for you to understand with respect to our crime data dashboard. Okay? Yeah, thank you. And a last question. So, what happens now to the tracking of weapon offenses, disorderly conduct offenses, intimidation offenses, interference with police officer offenses, criminal damage to property offenses, deception and fraud offenses, attempted burglary offenses, drug offenses, trespassing offenses, ordinance violations, driving under the influence offenses, traffic offense accidents, traffic accidents with personal injuries, and the number of traffic stops? I don't know, where does that information go now? I don't quite understand your question. Well, you've given us total property crimes and total violent crimes, when the annual report had all these kind of crimes in addition to the ones that- So, we are following best practices, you know what I mean? National best practices, and national best practices say that we present to you what was presented tonight. Now, I know what you just highlighted is important as well, and you will get that during our annual reports. Okay? Thank you. You're welcome.
Any more questions? Chandra?
I do appreciate the, the ward statistics that you sent us. You said that would be possibly monthly? Okay. And then, oh, yes, the presentation, will this be available to us and/or the public?
I'm gonna be very forward-facing, very transparent. I'm gonna find ways to make this for public consumption for the whole city.
Okay.
And you will get it tonight.
Thank you. Mary Alice, could you take the chair for a minute?
I'll take the chair, the chair recognizes Sharice.
Okay, the couple of questions that I have, basically, I know, you know, I watch a lot of Law &amp; Order and Chicago PD and everything. What is a COMSTAT?
So-
Not COMSTAT, only because you actually, you know, said this is not what this is. I need to understand what it is, so that I, I, I need to understand that.
So, COMSTAT was developed in the early nineties in New York City, and it's short for Computer Statistics.
Okay.
In which data's gathered, and based on that data, you deploy your personnel to specific areas that are problematic. The negative connotation with COMSTAT, because I know Mr. Evans had a, a concern that this, what our process was, is during the early nineties, you, you had the issue with stop and frisk. Police departments took COMSTAT and took it to a level that adversely impacted the community. Our process is more surgical, in terms that we, we want to know, okay, who, not just because you live here, we want to know who is driving crime. So, COMSTAT is very effective, but you, you really have to manage it as a police chief to ensure that it's, it's being followed to the, the true format that it was designed to be. But our process is not COMSTAT.
Okay, I want to be able to make that informed, you know, distinction. The other thing that, that I wanted to know is, so, with, with the knowledge of all, all of the, the percentages and, and the numbers of, of violent and non-violent crime that's, that's happening throughout the city, but not just throughout the city, but through each ward, and I also want to thank you for the information, and I did want to know if I could make that public, because I, I have a Facebook page that I wanted to put that on. But what I really would like to know is, because we've- But what I really would like to know is, because we've, as a council, have worked so hard to have, and finance and help, other programs throughout the city that have these, you know, different things for victims and so on and so forth. What more, what exactly will the police department bring or do to help with that? To ameliorate those and help those situations and to assist the many nonprofit organizations that we give grants to? How, is there a way of melding that together somehow, I guess is what I'm asking?
So our role when it comes to issues that have been created by systematic processes, for an example, if I was to take that graph, that graph of shootings, and create it a poverty map, that map and the shootings would go hand in glove. If I was to create a health inequity map, the shootings, as well as the poverty rate map, would go hand in glove. If I was to take and create a under-education map, or a school-to-prison pipeline map, they all would go hand in glove. That's not necessarily on the police. We're saddled with dealing with it because we're forward-facing, we're 24/7. So my philosophy has always been to partner with nonprofits that have a genuine interest in addressing those type of things and creating a partnership where we can help address that or those issues. I don't know if I answered your question, but I will say this. There's been many of good people that have met with me that want to do the work and want to partner with the police department. And once we have the proper staffing that we require, I promise you, you will see a difference in crime. You will see a difference in how the communities view law enforcement. And I just look, I'm excited about the opportunities to develop those type of partnerships and have some legitimate inroads to some of the challenges here in Urbana.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want the chair back?
Yes, I think I'll take it back.
All right, I'll relinquish the chair.
Thank you very much. Okay, are there any more questions for Chief Boone? Thank you, Chief Boone.
Thank you all.
Moving on with new business. Okay, we have Resolution Number 202311088R, Resolution Estimating the Tax Levy Fiscal Year 2023, 2024. And this is being brought forth by, I think it's Human Resources? Finance. Human Resources and Finance. I guess that's what the HRF means. Okay, and Elizabeth Hannan and, what's your name, sir? I forget. Robert Kuzma, Kuzmanov, will be presenting.
All right, I'm going to get this started. You've all had this, we have this conversation annually, and we're going to, because it only happens once a year, we're going to do a quick review of some property tax basics as we usually do. So in Illinois, properties are assessed at one-third of fair market value. That is the equalized assessed valuation. There are also exemptions applied which may reduce the taxing value. The most common one is a $6,000 exemption for owner-occupied properties. And then the EAV less the exemption is the taxing value, the basis on which property taxes are calculated for a particular property. So for example, on a $150,000 home, assessed at one-third of fair market value would be $50,000 if that home is owner-occupied. That would reduce the taxing value by $6,000 to $44,000, which is the amount used to calculate the tax bill. So also important to remember is that each taxing district, and there are a whole bunch of them that affect property owners in Urbana, so the city is a small part, the school district, the park district, the county, et cetera, they all levy their own taxes, and we're all doing this independently. So we all, that information all goes to the county, and the county clerk then calculates the total tax rate for a particular property by adding all of the tax rates for the individual taxing districts that are applicable there. So for most properties in Urbana, and I apologize, there's a small error in the slide, our city property taxes are about 12.5% of the total tax bill, just a rounding error. And also important is to remember the timing. Taxes that are levied in 2023, which we're doing now, will be revenue that is received by the city in calendar year 2024. So another thing that makes this whole process kind of tricky is, right now, when we're asking you to start the process of levying taxes, we don't know what the final assessments are going to be. That's not going to be locked in until the spring. And so when we ask you to finally approve the levy in December, we will also provide a separate ordinance that limits the tax rate to our current rate of $134.99. And what will happen is a particular portion of the levy will be reduced to make that happen. So a few quick points about pension funding. So police and fire pensions, which are part of what we levy taxes for, are defined benefit plans, and those benefits are set by state statute. We really, it is what it is. The only thing that we get to choose is how we go about funding them within the parameters of state law. So our current policy is to be 100% funded in 20 years. We started down that path in 2018, so in 2037 theoretically, I say that because actuarial calculations are really complicated, in 2037 theoretically, we will be 100% funded for both of those plans. So I'm going to give that to Robert to talk a little bit more about some specifics.
This next slide shows the breakdown of taxes for most of the properties in Urbana. There will be some differences for areas that might be in TIF districts. As you can see, the school district portion in blue is more than half of the property taxes of 55%. We also have the city at 12.5%, and the park district at 12, the county at 8%, and Parkland College at 5%. All other areas combined are 8%, and that includes the forest preserve, township, MTD, and public health. This distribution will certainly change with the 2023 levy, once those values come in and become finalized, but we do not expect them to change very much. Here we see the major revenues for the city's general fund, and it breaks out pensions from the corporate levy. So it's two separate items in this pie chart. As you can see, a little more than 4% of the total revenues that directly support city services come from the property taxes. The pension levies are received into the general funds and then are paid out to their respective pensions. For assessed value, we have this chart that shows equalized assessed value over 14 years, and we've seen healthy growth in that EAV over the last few years. Focusing on the city's portion of the property tax bill, you can see on this chart the cost to homeowners with properties valued between $100,000 and $250,000. One thing to note here is this includes the owner-occupied exemption, and again, this is just the city's portion. So an average home in Urbana is valued currently at $170,000, according to Realtor.com, making the annual city tax $684 for the average property in Urbana. We know, however, that real estate prices have been increasing, and we do predict changes in the future. The city's stated policy is to achieve an overall tax rate comparable to the city of Champaign. We have maintained a 1.3499 rate for a number of years, which is slightly higher than that of the city of Champaign at 1.3152. And there are four purposes for which our city levies taxes. The first being police pension, the second, fire pension, the third, library, and the fourth, corporate purposes. This is the part that goes to the general operating funds to pay for those basic city services, such as police protection. The library is very dependent on property tax revenue, which makes up the vast majority of the revenue in the library's general fund. The proposed levy of $4,959 for the library is based on the budget reviewed by the city council for fiscal year 2024, and will provide the necessary revenue to support that budget for the library. This is an increase of about 2.3% from the current tax levy. The police and firefighter pensions are the next largest share of the levy, at about This number is based on the funding policy approved by city council in May of 2018 in order to reach 100% funded status in 20 years, which ends in 2037. The corporate levy pays for the general fund expenditures, such as public safety. This is also the portion of the levy that is adjusted to maintain a stable tax rate. Based on maintaining the same tax rate, this portion will likely increase by about $199,000. However, that may be more or less, depending on adjustments needed to maintain the overall tax rate.
Okay, so I'm going to wrap this up with a couple of slides here. First, this slide shows the components of the tax levy over time, going back to 2013. So as you can see, the purple part at the bottom is the library, and that has been, you know, kind of steadily growing, especially in recent years. The green part in the middle is pensions. And you can see that's been impacted by funding policy changes that were made by the city council. So from 2013 to 2015, pension levies decreased because pension funding was reduced. And then beginning in 2016, they started increasing, even at the minimum amount that was required to be funded, and that's really because the unfunded liability that we weren't addressing was starting to grow. And then in 2018, that was the first year of our transition plan to this newer 20-year funding plan. And as you can see, of course, it, you know, grew for a while, but then it sort of started to become more manageable as we got on a good funding track. So also, something to note on this one is because of increased levies for pensions in the library over the last however many years, you can see that the general fund part that's at the top got smaller and smaller until the last couple of years, when we actually had enough growth in property values in the city to really start to allow us to increase the general fund portion. So this process is really dictated by state law, and I'll just run through real quickly the schedule. So next week, we'll ask you to move this on to the council agenda to approve the estimated levy for next week. That really is the number that's used to determine how we comply with the Truth and Taxation Act. So we know now, based on our growth in assessments, that our levy will increase by more than 5%. We'll be required to advertise and hold a public hearing, and that will happen on December 4th. And then on December 11th, we will bring the final levy to council, and we'll ask you to approve it. We don't plan to come back to committee again, because you're kind of getting the complete picture right now. There will be several ordinances that you have to approve. There'll be an ordinance levying taxes. There'll be an abatement. We'll have to, we'll have to let the county clerk know that they don't need to issue debt for the last payment on our 2014 bonds. There's a payment due in 2024, January 1 is our last payment. And then there'll also be an abatement to say, hey, if this results in a tax rate higher than $134.99, then we want you to reduce our corporate levy so that we achieve that tax rate. So that's it in a nutshell, and we're happy to answer questions.
James?
Hi, thank you for this. I always appreciate those details. I'm going to ask a couple of questions. I may have talked about this before, but I'm going to ask again anyway. Owner-occupied discount, you mentioned a couple times in here, which is intended to be a discount for individuals who live in the home that they're paying taxes on, but my understanding is that in Champaign County, one of the few counties in the state, there are a number of homes or properties that are being used as revenue sources where the person who owns them does not actually live in them, but is receiving that discount. Is that correct?
I understand that to be true. We, the city really has no control over that.
And that's based on policy of the county, either through the treasurer's office or through the supervisor of assessments that has made that allowance? That doesn't happen in more than one or two other counties in the state?
I believe that's true.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that. So that seems like an opportunity that if we were conforming to the vast majority, maybe 100 other counties in the state, and observing that, that those properties used for revenue sources would be contributing more to what all of us pay for.
Correct.
And we should, we should be asking our county elected officials and representatives to address that for us in the long term. Fair assessment?
That might be a reasonable thing to do.
Okay, and so the other question I have is, we talk a lot about, please, sorry, I'm losing my voice a little bit, the police and fire pensions, but we also are paying IMRF pension. I assume that comes out of the corporate portion of the levy?
Actually, that's paid from the general fund, but it's not necessarily tied to the corporate portion of the levy. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure.
What's the percentage of funding for that, for that?
The percentage of...
For IMRF?
In our current employer contribution rate?
Are we, is that, is that funded close to 100%? My understanding was IMRF doesn't let us do anything but 100%?
So the funding methodology is different. I believe it's something like a rolling 15-year period. So at the moment, I don't recall, but generally, we're very well-funded. It's, we're not...
IMRF is the healthiest state-operated retirement fund of the batch, is my understanding.
That may be true.
Yeah, and so we made a policy before my time, 2018, that we needed to fund police and fire 100% in 20 years from now. I guess my question is, what is, what is the risk if that number was 90% or 80%? What is the exposure that has drawn us to this expectation, which frankly, the rest of the state government does not observe, that we need to be 100% funded, because we're never going to have everybody retire at once? We're always going to have staff paying into the retirement kitty for future retirees.
Correct. We'll always be paying in for future retirees, but we actually hired an actuary specifically to help us evaluate that back in 2018 and what happened. to help us evaluate that back in 2018, and what happens is, when you have unfunded liability, essentially what happens is you're paying interest on the unfunded liability, because you haven't invested the money to earn income.
So, that's the risk?
Yes.
Associated with that, and that's very tangible, something we could look at if some future council says, why can't we back this down to 90%?
Oh, right, absolutely.
We can quantify what that means.
Right, we could get the same actuary back to update the analysis.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Chris?
You know what I'm going to ask. Can we have this? Will you send this to us? The PowerPoint presentation? Or is it in the 24 budget? I mean...
Well, some of the charts are in the 24 budget, but I'm happy to send the presentation.
You know, I need those. So, if we pass the resolution tonight, and if we pass it next week, I was asked today, are we locked and loaded, and that's it? We're at that levy for the entire year of 2024?
So, as I explained, the final levy that gets extended probably won't be that number, right? Because what we're really doing is we're voluntarily capping our rate at $134.99, and so, the number now is like 10-point-something million, but that will get reduced before the levy is extended to achieve that tax rate.
But we're capped at $1, I'm going to forgive my simpleton, but $135, essentially. Are we capped at that, then?
Yeah, I mean, we're not capped by the state. We're not subject to tax caps, but we're voluntarily capping it to maintain that rate.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Mary Alice?
Can I make a motion?
Make a motion.
All right, I move Resolution Number 2023-11088R, Resolution Estimating the Tax Levy for Fiscal Year 2023 to 2024 to City Council. Are we putting this, did we actually approve it, or does it go on file?
No, we're asking you to approve this estimated levy.
All right, thank you. What's the recommendation for approval?
Second, anybody?
Oh, second.
Thank you, Jaya. And now...
Yes, I'll put on the consent. Is that okay?
All right.
Okay, and that will go on consent? And is there any further discussion? Yes, James?
I do think it's important to point out that we're voluntary doing this, because we're a Home Rule entity as the city, which is kind of confusing, because we can't do that for the township or the town board, because that's covered by tax cap. So, we may have the same conversations here as city council and town board, but they're under different governance, because town board's not Home Rule, the city is.
Correct.
Weird but true.
The city's not subject to tax caps. Technically, you could levy any amount.
Any more discussion, comments? Okay, clerk, will you please call the roll? Okay, we'll do voice vote, then. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Okay, and that passes. Next, we have Ordinance Number 2023-11-040, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, maintaining the number of Class R and T-1 liquor licenses for Davis Candler LLC, DBA Boomerangs, 1309 East Washington Street, Urbana, Illinois. And is there anybody, I think that would be our illustrious mayor bringing that to us?
That would be the liquor commissioner speaking.
The liquor commissioner slash mayor?
Yes, this ordinance reflects just a change in the applicant and the licensee for the liquor license at Boomerangs. The Grassman still own the establishment, but there's a new manager there, so if this application is approved, then Davis Candler and Boomerangs will be the license holder, and Tom Grassman will relinquish that license. So, we don't have an increase in the number of R and T licenses.
Okay, James?
Just to clarify, removing the license from the owners to the manager?
No, the person who is running the restaurant is applying for, the restaurant or the establishment is now going to be applying for the license.
Okay, thank you.
An R and T license is one that's issued to a restaurant in Tavern. Boomerangs serves food, they also serve alcohol, so this would allow them to continue serving alcohol for onsite consumption or selling alcohol in its original packaging, which is the same thing that's been there before.
Any more questions?
I'll move approval of Ordinance Number 2023-11-040, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, maintaining the number of Class R and T-1 liquor licenses for Davis Candler LLC, doing business as Boomerangs, on 1309 East Washington Street, for consent.
Second.
Okay, so, it's been moved by James and seconded by Shandra, and for the consent agenda. And? Do I have some discussion? No discussion, therefore, Darcy, this one we do have to do a voice roll count.
Yes. Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Next is Ordinance Number 2023-11-041, an ordinance vacating a street, Boyden Street, east of Cunningham Avenue, between Oakland Avenue and Kerr Avenue. And we have Public Works, hello, Tim Cowan, and how are you, sir?
I'm doing well. Good evening, everybody.
Okay.
We had a public hearing on this a couple weeks ago. I don't have much else to produce, but I'm just going to walk through it for a refresher for everybody. Boydens Street vacation. The area is, again, east of Cunningham, between Kerr Avenue and Oakland Avenue. It's a short stretch of right-of-way that, for the most part, was undeveloped for, well, a portion of it forever, and a portion of it since the 70s. As you can see here on this view, the pink section is essentially what you see in the street view to the right there. It's kind of an aggregate access driveway, and then the yellow section is unimproved. It's all vegetated at this point, and has never been a traveled way. Go the other way. Just a summary, this was originally dedicated to the city in 1906, as part of the original plat for this area. Development has never necessitated a public street or service transportation in this location. That north portion that I just discussed, we don't have any construction records for public improvements in this area. We've only known maintenance efforts have been primarily associated with systematic pothole filling, similar to public alleys that are low-volume, low-risk. The southern portion, there's no existing traveled way on it. Public Works recommends vacation of this right-of-way, and reserving a utility easement for existing and future utility maintenance and construction in this area. A little bit of additional information, as I noted, we had a public hearing on October 16th. There was no public comment during that meeting. No replating will be performed or is required. No payment is proposed to be collected from the benefiting properties in lieu of financial benefits for the city in the form of reduced maintenance of this section of right-of-way. And it's proposed to be vacated in two sections, 610 Kerr Avenue, which would be that south portion, to the adjacent property owner, and then the north portion, all to the 1,009.5 Boydens Street address, as 609 Oakland Avenue waived their rights in favor of this owner to maintain their private access drive that exists here now, which would be, the green property here has waived their rights towards adjacent vacation to them in favor of the blue property. I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Tim? Mary Alice?
Thank you, Tim. I apologize, this just occurred to me, so I know we've seen this a couple of times. What, if we vacate this property for Boydens Street, what happens to the address for 1009?
It remains the same, actually. Yeah, we checked with our land surveyor on that, and the post office and everybody else, it actually remains the same.
Even though there will theoretically no longer be that street?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we looked into it. It's very peculiar, also. I'll say they're not mandated to change it.
But I guess my point is, there's no road there, so how could they change it?
Correct, yeah, I understand.
Okay.
Grace?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation on this, Tim. Have you gotten any public input on this, or have you had further discussions with the owner of 1,009.5? Did this go to a commission first?
No, this doesn't go to a commission. We notified him and all other adjacent property owners within 250 feet of this location of the intent to do this. I've spoke with the landowner about our intent to do this. We've received petitions to proceed from the 609 Oakland Avenue and then the 610 Kerr Avenue in support of it.
Petitions in support from those neighbors? And I was just recalling that there were some conversations with the owner of the impact probably of 1,009, and so I guess that was kind of the question, have you had conversations, I guess, feel like anything's?
No, we haven't heard anything else back from them.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And entertain a motion, if anyone has one. Shandra?
I'll move Ordinance Number 2023-11-041, an ordinance vacating a street, Boydens Street, east of Cunningham Avenue, between Oakland Avenue and Kerr Avenue, wants a City Council for approval on the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Shandra, seconded by Mary Alice. Can I get any discussion, any more discussion? Okay, Darcy, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda is Resolution Number 2023-11-089, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Illinois Department of Human Services grant agreement supporting municipalities for asylum seeker services agreement, Cunningham Township Supervisor's Office.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to discuss these three resolutions all at the same time, since they're essentially the same. So, back on October 23rd, we brought to all of you the grant that we received from the Illinois Department of Human Services in the amount of $247,917. That was accepted by council, so now I have for you the three subrecipient agreements that we are executing with Cunningham Township Supervisor's Office, the New American Welcome Center, and the Refugee Center, which are the agencies that will actually be operating the programs to be funded through this grant. Couple things I'll note, 100% of these grant funds are going directly to direct service to the agencies. The city is not retaining any of this grant funding for administrative purposes. That was a requirement from IDHS, so you'll see that reflected in the grant budget. The grant budget is in Attachment A, and then the work plan can be found in Attachment B of your memo. The funding period for these subrecipient agreements does go back to July 1, 2023, and extends to June 30, 2024, so the three agencies will be able to bill for eligible expenses back to July 1 of 2023. And an estimated 300 recently arrived migrants are estimated to be served with these grant funds. The agencies will be required to submit monthly progress reports on how many clients they're serving. That way, we can keep tabs on the progress and make sure that the funds are being expended in a timely manner. It is a very quick turnaround. Again, we're kind of already well into the year here, and the funds do need to be expended by June 30, 2024. That's another requirement of IDHS. This grant is going to be jointly administered by myself and the City of Champaign Department of Equity and Engagement, and there won't be any other impacts on the city's general fund. So, I'll just point your attention really quickly here to the budget attachment. You can see the breakdown there per agency, and then also per service, eligible service category. So, Cunningham Township Supervisor's Office is receiving $61,200. New American Welcome Center is receiving $113,808, and the Refugee Center is receiving And those amounts were based on budgets that each agency submitted, so we asked them, how much would you need? That's what they submitted, and thankfully, we received 100% of what we asked for from the state, so we were able to fund them all at 100% of what they requested. In terms of the budget per service category, these are all outlined by the state, so there are certain eligible categories that these funds can be spent on. Shelter and housing category is budgeted at $67,700. Food assistance is receiving $14,500 of funding. Wraparound case management services, $87,631.50. And then legal support is budgeted at $78,086. So, I'll answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions for Braden? Okay, Chris?
I'm going to ask again, Braden, and I just got to hammer this point across. These 200 adults and 100 children, they are officially in the process of seeking citizenship. They are known by immigration authorities. They are in the bureaucratic process of working on citizenship, correct?
Citizenship or some other form of permanent status, yes.
Like a work visa, or, but they're known officially to the authorities.
Correct.
They didn't sneak in, they're not carrying fentanyl, they're not sex traffickers, and all that nonsense that I hear online. They are legitimate people with legitimate needs, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Mary Alice?
Thank you for the information. It's, you guys are doing this, and the city isn't getting any months to administer, but it's a worthy cause, so thank you very much. I just had a question for both the New American Welcome Center and the Refugee Center. Both of them list direct assistance, and so my question to you is, is this just cash payments to individuals, to families?
The direct assistance payments for both programs, and I have confirmed this with them, because I had that same question as well, the direct assistance is specifically to be used for rental assistance. They categorize it as direct assistance. It's housing or shelter assistance, so both agencies have rent assistance programs that they're already operating, so these funds will go to kind of build out those programs and serve clients that they weren't able to previously serve, but it will be rental assistance, and I think there's also the flexibility to use it for like a hotel voucher if necessary, if other options don't work out.
Is there an estimate on how many families slash individuals they could assist? Because one is 20,001, it's 25,000, so it doesn't seem like a lot of money.
So, we had, we don't have rough estimates. What the state asked of us, which was very nice of them, was that we simply track our progress on how many we're serving, just because it's a little unknown at this time. They budgeted, so both budgets are based on like, you know, $750 per family per month, roughly, you know, how many could that serve? The state's not necessarily holding us to that, they just want to see, and if you look in the work plan here, that's how they're going to be tracking. They just want to see monthly how many we're meeting. So, thankfully, it's a little bit open-ended in that regard, but both agencies, like I said, do already have existing programs that they've been running, and I think they typically will estimate like $750 per family, and typically, it's capped at like a year to 15 months of assistance. That tends to be how those programs operate.
Thank you.
Grace?
Thanks for the update on these contracts and the work for getting these grants in the community. I think it's really great to be addressing this need, so thank you for that. Do you know of a referral system for using these funds, or if any are streamlined, just in a sense, who does someone call, you know, if they see an asylum-seeking family in need on the side of the road, which is sometimes, you know... which is sometimes, you know, not uncommon? And so who do we call in that case? Do you know if there's like a general intake or you just have to reach out to each organization?
That's a great question. So one, the first thing I'll say is that some of the, if you look at each agency's budget, which is included in the agreements, some of the legal assistance funding will be used for greater outreach. I know that at least two of the agencies will be doing workshops. I know Cunningham Township has plans to do legal aid workshops. Some of the funding can be used for outreach, getting out flyers, connecting with families, making them aware of the resource. So that's one thing that I know the agencies are planning to do, and IDHS is really encouraging agencies to do, is to expand that outreach. I would say as of right now, there isn't really a centralized intake for those families. If anyone is aware of a family who would qualify under this definition of a recently arrived migrant, I would definitely have them reach out, you know, if they're in Urbana, definitely Cunningham Township Supervisor's Office is the best entry for them. But the Refugee Center covers the whole county and as does New American Welcome Center. So I would definitely encourage people, if they qualify or if they know someone who qualifies, definitely reach out to them. They're also happy to contact me as well, and I can refer them to the appropriate agency.
You.
And entertain a motion. Mary Alice?
I was just going to say, can we bundle this?
Sure, I think we probably, a motion could include just omnibuses.
So I have to first move to be an omnibus and then one, yeah. So I would like to move ordinance number, sorry, resolution number 2023-11-089. A resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Illinois Department of Human Services grant agreement supporting municipalities for asylum seeker services agreement with the Cunningham Township Supervisor's Office. And resolution number 2023-11-0090R. A resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Illinois Department of Human Services grant agreement supporting municipalities for asylum seeker services agreement, New American Welcome Center. And resolution number 2023-11-091R. Resolution approving and authorizing the execution of Illinois Department of Human Services grant agreement supporting municipalities for asylum seekers service agreement, the Refugee Center as an omnibus.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Mary Alice. Move for a motion to omnibus the aforementioned resolutions? And Jaya seconded. Can I get a voice, a voice vote on this? All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye. Aye. Any objections? Okay, next.
I would like to make a motion to move those newly omnibused three resolutions to the consent agenda at the next city council meeting.
I'll second that too.
Okay. Mary Alice moved to move the omnibus for approval on a consent agenda for next week, and Jaya seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion, I'm sorry, discussion. Always forget discussion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and those resolutions pass. Next, we have a change in the agenda so that we have council input. So council input, or communications, anyone, James?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, I wanted to say thanks to Chief Boone and his staff and the members of the community that came out to our Ward Seven listening session on Thursday last week. I think we had about 25 or 30 people there. And not just from Ward Seven, from all over the place. Chris joined us as well. It was a, it was a good discussion, lots of good questions. It was democracy at work, so I really appreciated that. And I appreciated everybody's time in making that happen, including St. Matthew Lutheran Church, who donated their facility for the purpose. Thanks.
Okay, Jaya?
Well, that's a perfect segue. I'm sure Mary Alice was gearing up for this too. We're doing a combined listening session with Chief Boone for wards one and four, but again, anybody is welcome to join. That will be this Thursday, November 9th, from 6:00 to 7:30 at the Freedom School, which is 303 East Fair Lawn, across from the middle school. And we would love to see a similarly great turnout. And again, folks from any part of the city are welcome to join and be a part of that conversation.
Any other comments or? Grace?
Thank you. Ward Six listening session has yet to be scheduled, but I had two other updates or announcements. One was this past Saturday at the Urbana Landscape Recycling Center, we did the Second Annual Pumpkin Smash. And we had over 57 drop-offs of carloads of visitors to drop off their pumpkin wastes. This was hosted by Champaign County Environmental Stewards, also partnered with the Champaign, or sorry, with the Urbana Sustainability Advisory Commission here at the city, and of course, the Urbana Landscape Recycling Center. I'll get some estimates later on how much weight we got, but I'd say probably over 2,000 pounds this year. And then we also partnered with Students for Environmental Concerns, who had a few drop-off spots on campus, and they brought out their pumpkins kind of en masse out to the LRC, so we'll have some numbers on that later. So again, thanks for the support, and hopefully that can continue. My second piece of input is that coming up on November 20th meeting, I plan to have a resolution to request rezoning of 205 North High Cross Road, which is that property just north of Aldi that we heard some input on this evening. So this would be just a basic request for the zoning administrator to put in an application to change the zone from B3 back to its original B1 zoning classification. So there'll be more information coming at that November 20th meeting in your packet, compiled by staff with some of their assistants. And then if passed, then it would go through the official channels still to plan commission and then back to us again for approval. So I just wanted to give you a heads up about that upcoming piece. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mayor Marlin?
Yes, I wanted to address the concern that was expressed earlier this evening related to Hope Village. And over the past few months, whenever I'm, when people approach me about Hope Village, often they express fears about this project, and sometimes those fears aren't necessarily based on fact. And so I wanted to address the concern that was expressed tonight about removing parking on Carver Drive and Dory Miller Drive. First of all, those are Champaign streets, and Urbana has no control whatsoever about whether or not parking is removed from those streets. But I will tell you that based on everything we know about the project, we, they don't expect a huge increase in traffic, as we've heard over and over again. The people living at Hope Village, most of them will not have vehicles. They won't be driving in and out, and they may occasionally get visitors, but it's not going to be a flood of traffic that, that people fear. But again, the main factor here is that the City of Champaign controls whether or not parking is, is, is on the street, off the street, or basically anything related to those streets. So I just want to make sure folks know that, that that's the information we have at this point on that. And just a quick comment on the all-hands effort, which, which I just was, I think this is the beginning of a really excellent approach to some of the most challenging areas in our community. But in addition to the types of approaches that Chief Boone mentioned, we also are conducting systematic inspection of those rental properties there. So each property will be, is, is, if it hasn't been already, is gone through unit by unit to determine, to make sure that those properties are up to code. And if they're not, the owners or managers or both are notified and given a certain amount of time to address those violations. So the end result is that the, the interior, exterior surroundings of each of those properties is going to be better than it is today. And that's going to make a big difference, I think, in, in both quality of life and I think the types of activity you see over there as well. So I want to thank staff, everyone, and Carol Mitten for organizing this first all-hands approach.
Anyone else? Okay, my comments. Just to piggyback, I'll start off with, piggybacking with what Mayor Marlin said regarding the Hope Village Carver Drive issue. Yes, Carver Drive is in fact a Champaign street, which is going to lead onto an Urbana property. Therefore, there is some concern. The other thing is that the property in, that we're mentioning is in Urbana and has access to it from Federal Drive. And so there, the Carver Park residents are well aware of that it is a Champaign street because they live there. The other thing is that unless you live there, you do not understand the impact of the traffic, because there is very little traffic that goes down that street. So any new traffic is impacted on that community. Just to make that straight. Any, any additional traffic will have an impact on that community. So let me just put it that way. The other thing I would like to say is, thank you, Chief Boone, also for the listening session in Ward Three. I'm sorry that not more people showed up, but at least some people showed up, and it was educational for the, the few that did show up, and I really appreciated that. I'm also hopeful that we will have more people concerned regarding the meeting that Dr. Trask discussed regarding ways to present reparations regarding Champaign County. That's going to be on November 16th. So that's an, an excellent educational opportunity for everyone. And that's about all I have to say. Next, okay. Next agenda item is discussion, facilitated discussion regarding mayor and council strategic goals update. And I guess I should hand that over to the mayor?
I'll do a little introduction.
Okay, go ahead, Carol.
Thank you. So as you know, the mayor council strategic goals that are in place right now are for two years. We were encouraged to have a reasonable time horizon and therefore calendar year 2022 through 2023. And so now it's time to update those goals. And back by popular demand is Kevin James as our facilitator. And so we're going to do this in two segments, and tonight he's going to get us started. And now would be the time for you to make your way to the front. And so Kevin has a, he has a plan for our time this evening. And if you have any technical questions, Will Kolchowski is here, since he's been sort of managing the process of doing the updates. But I'll turn it over to Kevin, and then we'll see how it goes.
Quick question.
Yes.
How long do we expect this is going to go?
Hopefully quickly.
Roughly.
No, I think if we spend about an hour here, I think we'll, we'll get through.
Do we take a five-minute break before we start?
Yes, actually, I was planning on, I know I was talking with the clerk about we're going to move into small groups. So I could just do a real quick, 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 you know, two minutes, and then we'll, when we move, we'll take a break as we move into these smaller groups.
Would be great.
Can we do even more than a five-minute, maybe 10?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you for having me back. I was excited to be contacted and have an opportunity to come back and work with the council, the mayor, and the staff. And so I'd first, first off, like to really give you guys a shout-out for going through and working the plan. A lot of organizations, they do planning, strategic planning, and it stops right there. And so it's exciting to see the updates that I've found on your website. Will has sent me a lot of different information, so it's exciting that you've formulated a plan and you've decided we need to continue to work at it. And so as Carol has said, tonight is to go through a strategic plan update. And so the goal is we're going to break into small groups where you're not going to hear me talk. You guys are going to get a chance to talk, council and the mayor with staff. And the clerk will explain that process here in a second. And the goal is to have conversations tonight about the plan that's already in place. And so a couple of things just to consider is, when you have these discussions and you're doing a plan update, you don't necessarily have to change just for the sake of change. So specifically because you've been working over the last couple of years, if these big strategic areas are still valid, which based on a survey, I think they are, we're just going to really reaffirm that. But there is going to be some discussion that I will ask each group to conversate once we break into small groups. So it's really to have a discussion. I'll, I'll prompt the questions, and then we'll have four tables. And then we'll just hear, we'll probably take the mic to each table, and someone will just speak on it as I ask each series of questions, and we just go through that discussion. Any questions?
If I could just say one follow-on thing that's more of a housekeeping. In order, as we break into small groups, imagine that you're in a separate room at your table. And so it's really important that there be no more than two elected officials at any table, because then, because we're having these private conversations that are not going to be broadcast, then we'll come back together and we'll, and we'll be basically together again, and the Open Meetings Act rules apply. So please, no more than two elected officials at any one table. Thank you.
I would also just add that there is to be no crosstalk between tables. Like you have to stay within your bubble, so that way it's only two elected officials engaging.
As far as breaking up the elected official, oh, do we have a question? Yes.
Thank you. And were you going to clarify about the whole small groups are recess? Okay. I was wondering if you knew when we got the last update on goals? I was trying to find them. It's like impossible to search muni code now. I think that might be important for our small groups to look at the updates for each action item, and I just couldn't find those handy, if anyone had them or knew when that was.
It's within the last two months that we did the update, but we have them all, all the updates by quarter are on the website under, if you go into the, if you go into city council in the government dropdown, and then you'll see a mayor council goals there, and then you'll see all the quarterly updates. Do you see that? Oh, I didn't, I thought you were clicking through.
Still looking, but that's, that's a good start. I think I'll get it from there. Thank you.
All right.
Clerk, do you have the assignment for each table before we take a break?
Yeah, I was just going to suggest that we just do one, two, three, and mayor, and so on, just in groups of two. The staff tables on either side will pull apart so that they can have people sitting on either side, so folks have their backs to each other. And also just to clarify again, like, these are private conversations, but what is determined at each table will then be shared with the public and the group as a whole at the dais once we come back together. So nothing is being kept secret.
Was that a suggestion on how we split into groups? I was assuming we might split how we did last time, like, for example, I would like to be in the infrastructure group again, not just arbitrarily the fourth group.
Are we splitting by topic or are we just?
No.
Okay.
Because all, all four tables have an opportunity to talk about all of these, these areas.
But if you remember who you were grouped with last time, I'm not opposed to you sitting with the same official as last time, but I just thought that it was easiest to break out one, two, one, two.
It changed over the couple of nights, so I think I was with Jaya one time and...
Yeah, that's fine. I thought we were splitting by strategic area like we had done the last time.
Each table will talk through each, because we're, the goal, again, to remind you, the goal is not to get down into the action items per se. We might have an opportunity to do that at the end. It's really mainly the first two areas, which is the strategic areas, and then talking about the strategy. So all the tables will have an opportunity to review those and then come back and report out to the larger group. So I'll turn it over to you.
So as part of doing that, I know we want to take a recess as well, just to get the room situated. But this will also be a recessed activity, so as part of that, we have to have a time-specific limit because that is our, our policy. So is there a set time that you would like them to be in groups? And is there a set time we would like to have a break to facilitate the space?
It is 8:50 right now, so nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock to come back? Okay, and then how long are we going to need to be in small groups?
We will be in small groups for 45 minutes. We will be in small groups for 45 minutes.
For 45 minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. So, at nine o'clock, we're going to come back and split into those groups. I need someone to motion in second for us to enter a recess.
I'd like to move we enter in recess until 9:45.
I second. Do we need to vote? Do we need a voice vote?
It wouldn't hurt to do a voice vote.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? All right, so we'll be back in at nine o'clock. Darson, can you do the little clock for 10 minutes?
Yes, I will set a timer for 10 minutes so that then we are back and we are in our small groups, and I will set another timer for 45 as well.
Thanks.
Let's just leave it here until we're done.
Yep.
All right.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't...
the next, the bulk of our time is going to be going through a series of questions at your tables before we convene as a large group. I think process-wise, that's going to make the most sense, also based on time. So, I'm really going to give you, just if someone wants to kind of jot these down, and I can walk around and reaffirm these questions. But as in a small group, I want you to consider these following questions and have a discussion around them. So, the first question is, for your update of your strategic plan, do you still want to have this be the timeframe that goes from now, we'll call it November of 2023, through May of 2025? That could be a simple yes or no, but make sure you're talking about it, because that is, from what I've been told, is the period of the current elected official's timeframe. So, that is a, what is that, a 17-month, 18-month, 17-month process? So, that's the first question. Is the timeframe of this next update going to carry you through May of 2025? The other question is, as you reflect back on the past two years, is there anything with the process of working your strategic plan that you may want to consider changing moving forward? This is not the items in the plan, it's more of the process. So, is there anything as far as reporting? Was there anything as far as communication as you've worked the plan? So, from a council perspective, from a staff perspective, is there anything in the last two years from, that you would like to potentially discuss with your table? Maybe we can improve the process, the reporting. And so, that's just a discussion, it's an item that we'll review. The third area, or the question I want you to consider is, as you look, we're going to first, now we're going to talk about the strategic planning major areas. So, currently, the four areas that you selected were public safety and well-being as area number one, housing as area number two, infrastructure as area number three, and economic recovery and development as area number four. Based on, will they have these results, right? Do they have this? So, based on a survey, it was said that these four areas still want to be kept, the majority of them. The only thing that I know from previous discussions, a couple of items. One was, does area number four, do you want to continue to have the word recovery in there? Or does that become economic development? There's also, at the bottom of the compiled survey responses, there was proposed two new strategic areas. One was called create tourist and entertainment district. And then the other one was, it talked about an all-hands approach model. So, you have to discuss at your table, do you want to add a major area? So, one, do you want to revise any of the wording of the four areas, and do you want to add an area? I will give you, you know, again, when you add a major area, you're adding a lot more work to be done and an additional focus. So, take that into consideration. And then, lastly, which is probably where you're going to spend the bulkier time, is once you've decided if these areas, which I believe the four areas at least are staying, I would like for you to go through each one of these strategies and say, see if they are still valid, too. And so, there's also some ideas, maybe for some action steps, which we're going to talk about next week. That is not something, we're not talking about action steps, we're talking about the strategies. So, each one of these areas, talk about those strategies. Is that strategy still valid as you move forward into 2024 and beyond? So, we will spend the next 39 minutes doing that, and then we will come back as a large group, and each table will report out the answers to these questions.
I have a question.
I do, I do not know. All it says is there should be an item about the all-hands model, which spans several areas.
The over, I'm, I don't know, there is not any more official detail than what was written down, so that's all you have to go off of. My guess is that it's related to the policing all-hands that was discussed earlier tonight. But what you see in front of you is the detail that was given from the survey, so it's open-ended.
Okay.
Five more minutes before we bring back to the larger group. Five minutes. All right, as we finish up your discussions, we will have all the elected officials come back to their spot. And then they will be the ones reporting out.
Hello, sir? What?
You need to officially like call us back from our recess.
Oh, okay. I'm calling back the committee of the whole into session from recess. So can I get a motion to do that?
So moved. Second.
All right, it's done.
All right. So first of all, I appreciate the speed conversation. Nothing like a little timed conversation to get everybody talking. So what I'd like for us to do now is at each table, there was two elected officials. And so if one of you maybe wants to take the lead and report out on what your group talked about. And so we'll take this kind of question by question. So it could be really easy. Obviously, the first question. So I'll start over here at this table. So one and two. So whoever would like to speak. The first question was, is the timeframe, the next set of timeframe, is that still something you want to look, is that the timeframe you want to do your strategic planning update for?
So we discussed extending the timeframe to December 2025 because it usually takes a new group of city council members a little bit of time to get up to speed. And of course, they could always change it, too.
Sure. So the consideration is let's do another two-year approach through the end of '25. All right. Next group, Ward three and the mayor. Anybody want to speak on the first question, which was timeframe?
Through December 2025.
Oh, okay. Awesome. Like-minded. Great.
We didn't think about that, but we like it. We stuck with the May 2025 with the caveat of like the month before wrapping it up and then May doing the final report out. So December 2025, but like November wrapping things up and then December doing the report.
Okay. So whatever timeframe you're picking, that you decide on, having a wrap-up about a month beforehand and then kind of having a final report as you move in that. Okay. And then the last group, Ward six and seven.
We did discuss doing a two-year, but we leaned towards the May 2025.
Okay. So I guess I don't know if we have to, any discussion on that? Do we want to continue to look for a two-year period? Or do we really want to potentially try to narrow our focus to that May area? I'll open the floor.
I don't. Did we come into the tail end of other goals? Or, yes?
Yeah, I don't think we started this until in November ourselves, actually. So, you know, and it went through, up through all of December because I remember I was angry about, about holidays time. So I don't think we even started this ourselves until November, December. We got this taken care of. And then we finished it in January, like early January. Will did the last thing of the strategic goal thing.
And we developed a whole different framework and structure for it, which actually is working much better than anything we had in the past.
It actually went into March.
It went into March?
Yeah, it was late March, early April before the final vote took place. So it takes some, it took some time. And so, you know, like having something that cascades beyond your term would probably And so, you know, like having a, something that cascades beyond your term would probably help the next group get their legs under them.
Yeah, I think that's, I think having a two-year plan carrying you through 25, I think, is realistic. It seems like based on all the information I've read over the last two years, you guys have been very successful at moving forward on a lot of these items. So I don't think there's any, I mean, we just originally put that being that, that may date. But I think after just, you know, what you guys have proposed, I think that's fine, you know? You're right, I guess, potential new elected officials could come in and nix it right away. But I, the reality of it is, most people come in, is there a plan we're already working, working through? So I think it's up to you guys, but I think it's a, it's a good idea to just say, let's just do another two-year set of potential goals and, or potential action items and. I don't know how you guys want to do this, you guys.
Book consensus on that or something or what?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's really up to you, I.
Do we vote, do we say aye or noye?
You could do a straw poll.
Straw poll, okay, thumbs up if you want to keep it for December 2025 rather than May 2025. Okay, thumbs win.
You have to say the number for straw poll.
Okay, great, one, two, nine, six, seven.
Seven thumbs.
Seven thumbs.
All right, so the next question that I had your group discuss was a reflection on the process over the last two years. So I think it's one thing to look at what was on paper, which was your strategic areas, strategies and action steps. But it's also the process, how was the process of carrying out these action items? So it was a reflection or a takeaway when you looked about, looked at the process, how reporting was done, communication was done. Was there anything that you saw that, even if you really liked, but also maybe is there any ideas to move forward? So I'll reverse it and we'll start with this table over here, so Ward six and seven. Was there any discussion points that you guys had around the process? Maybe some areas that you, suggestions as you move forward into your next update?
We did, thank you. We thought it might be nice to be a more collaborative process for the quarterly check-ins throughout that time period, where this one has been very much a one-way presentation from staff to council. Maybe a few questions, but it was a staff report, not even a discussion platform in the meetings when we got those updates. So we thought it would be great if there could be more of a discussion with council when we get those updates. And then also would be helpful for staff, for them to discuss any changes or troubleshooting. Because there have been some that we saw early on needed to be changed or we needed to pivot or update this direction a little bit. But we didn't actually have the time to do that. So if we could maybe have a more of a collaborative process throughout, we thought that could be beneficial for council and staff to achieve some of these goals.
Okay, thank you. Ward four and five.
Yeah, I think we said something similar, if the quarterly updates are helpful, but if we can have it be more of a discussion. And I, my understanding is right now Carol's having to collect everything, but if we can have maybe some other staff participate in that conversation, just to have more folks involved.
Okay, so more of that collaboration and discussion, okay, not just reporting out. Ward three and the mayor.
There was a suggestion that in developing or revising action items, that staffs below department heads be involved in discussing more of the details on how these get implemented or get at least their feedback on implementation of the action items. So just a little bit more staff input below the department head level.
Sure.
For staff.
Okay, so not only, yeah, as action items potentially are revised or updated during the process, if as much staff feedback as needed, but also, you know, extending beyond, you know, just the director level. And then Ward one and Ward two, any feedback on the process?
So the feedback that we talked about was the, the report structure was nice, it was a nice summary of what was going on. It seemed like the staff, it wasn't difficult for them to come up with, it wasn't a heavy lift for them. There was a conversation about like communication piece, but we didn't have any suggestions like everybody else did. So I think that all the suggestions are good suggestions. Really what it was to have that back and forth a little bit with the council members and the staff who are working on these things, that was the primary idea.
Okay, yeah, so really, yeah, what I'm hearing is a little more of the collaboration, not only from elected officials to staff, but also different layers of the staff and trying to find ways to have communication as you kind of go on those quarterly updates. So I, I think it's important to sometimes reflect on the process as much as the actual plan and the items as you check them off and as you work through the plan, making sure the process feels productive.
I just wanted to say that, I know when we were talking about it, I always, I always felt, I didn't feel uninformed, I didn't feel left out because a lot of the action items and stuff that we are doing doesn't really involve council being directly involved in, in stuff, except maybe to vote on something. But I always, I felt informed because most of the stuff that I would, that I recall when we did stuff, we'd at least had two-by-twos about it before it was put in, before we, we did it or afterwards. So when I go through the, the updates, it's like, oh yeah, I remember when we did this, oh yeah, I remember when we talked about this. And I, and I have added notes to or whatever to, not all of it, but most of it. I don't, me personally, I don't need to be on the ground floor of everything.
Yeah.
I need to, I just want to know that it's done.
Yep, all right. So moving on to question three, so question three talked about the major strategic areas. You had your four strategic areas from the, the previous plan or the plan that we're updating. And so what I asked each group was, do these four areas, are they still valid? Now, based on feedback from the survey, it seems like they are. So I really asked, is there, was there a revision to strategic area number four with that word recovery maybe still being there or not being there? And then there was a couple proposed major areas that were at least, that were proposed. So I just want to hear your feedback if anything different or if you still think the four areas are the only four areas and how they're written. So we'll just, we'll just go with Ward one and two.
Okay, so we came up with a new name for strategic area number four.
Okay.
Instead of economic recovery and development, we wanted to call it economic health.
Okay, economic health. All right.
And then out of the, the new strategic areas, we felt that the creative tourist and entertainment district could be under the strategic area of economic health. So we would need a new strategic area for it. And then we also felt we had a lot to talk about philosophy. So we thought that there are certain things that should be infused throughout the entire thing. And one of them is the all hands.
Yeah.
And, and more collaboration amongst the, the different units to address all of these different strategic areas. And then we do have in here for housing, we have equity, but we think that that should also be a philosophy throughout the whole.
I think, and I even, I remember that conversation from a couple of years ago, equity, where did it fall and play? So yeah, so I, yeah, so the, the tourist and entertainment district, I think if you're going to, that one might fall more as a strategy, potential strategy under your economic health proposal. And then that all hands approach, more of a philosophy along with the equity.
Exactly.
So yeah, I appreciate that. We'll go with Ward three and the mayor, what was your table's discussion around these four areas and any proposed new ones?
Turn on your mic. Like the idea of economic health, I think that's a great change. But we support keeping the four, not adding any new strategic areas.
Okay, all right. Ward four and Ward five, what was your discussion around the four current areas and any other?
We, we changed it from economic recovery to economic growth and development, but I also like economic health. And we also thought that creative tourist and entertainment district should go into strategic area number four. And the all hands, like Mary Alice said, is sort of infused in all of them, but maybe even into housing. Because a lot of it was about quality of life and, and safe living. But I, we could see it infused in all of it. And we did think that all the four areas were still valid.
Okay, thank you. And then Ward six and Ward seven, what was your discussion on that question?
So I think we can go along with the rename because we talked about dropping the recovery item. And we plus-one the, moving the tourist and entertainment district into that one, as not having a separate one. The all hands thing is a realization that if we have an action or a strategy that covers multiple areas, we don't have a good way of calling that out and.
Sure.
And creating an action associated with that. And that led, and I'm going to say the equity thing again, that led to the, the memory of, we talked about equity being like throughout it. But by doing that, we've lost maybe some of the emphasis that we all wanted to have with that. So I think we would advocate for a way to like elevate those thematic goals that go through all of them and make sure there's a way to identify actions that go with those themes as opposed to creating new areas.
Yeah, I, so I appreciate that. I've seen it with other clients I've worked with, I've seen this a few times. And there's, when you get down into action items, there's, you know, there's a timeframe, there's, you know, who's responsible for doing that. And that can naturally fall to certain areas. But there's also, I've seen some where they add the impact or, you can call it the outcome, but the impact. And, and that's where potentially this all hands, or you know, it's, this is impacting, this is community-wide or this is, this is not just public safety, this is not just housing, this isn't all hands. It's really the impact is, it's, it is community-wide based and it's going to take more than maybe just one specific sector or one entity of the city to address that. So it's a way of, in your plan of like, okay, our impact is, it could be localized or it could be specific to one of these four areas, but the impact could be broader than that. So I've seen that kind of like even bullet pointed out in, in their status updates. And so I, so based on what I've heard is the four areas are still valid. There's a proposal to name the fourth area, economic health. And then we talked about that there's a potential, moving that tourist entertainment district would be more of a strategy, which we'll talk about here next. So would the group agree that the four areas are valid with the fourth one being renamed economic health?
Thumbs up. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, okay, eight unanimous.
All right, all right, so now we're going to get into a little bit of the details. We're going to continue to work through this and I think we'll be fine. So we're going to take this one by one. So public safety and well-being, we're really just thinking about the strategies. And I know some groups had started to brainstorm action items and we're going to give you, if you do have some action items, I'll give you a direction as we move forward to next week. But I'd really like to hear, are these strategies still valid and supporting that big strategic area as you move forward into 24 and 25? So we'll, we'll start with, we'll just keep going, we'll start with one and two. What was your discussion around the strategies for just under public safety and well-being?
We felt that all of these were still relevant. We did take into consideration the new strategy and we felt that would be better as an action instead of a new strategy.
Okay, so the, the three current strategies are still valid that, and then the oversight and efficiency of first responders could potentially be an action item under that?
Correct.
All right, next group, Ward three and the mayor, what was your discussion around the strategies for strategic area number one?
The three existing strategies are fine. We saw the all hands approach being part of the promoting community well-being.
Okay, all right.
And we didn't go for the enhanced oversight.
And we did not go for the enhanced oversight and efficiency, mainly it wasn't clear what that actually meant.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll double back on that if we need to. Ward four and Ward five.
Yeah, we didn't get into the proposed strategy that much, but felt fine with the other three as stated.
Okay, and then Ward six and Ward seven, what was your discussion at your table around the first major area in those strategies?
I think about the same as some of the others that have been stated, okay, with the three strategies and adding enhanced oversight and efficiency of first responders as an action item in there.
Okay, all right, so I think we have agreeance on keeping that.
Keeping with strategies.
Keeping the strategies for strategic area number one.
Oh, okay.
Do we need to vote on that or we want to wait till we get?
Yeah, we may as well, thumbs up for keeping.
All right.
Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, okay.
All right, just keep moving through and we'll keep the same order. Housing, strategies under housing.
We agreed that the two strategies under there were correct and we propose a new one, which is called increased housing choice and opportunities, for example, mixed income areas.
Say that again, just for my, for my, my type and partner, Will.
Okay, so our proposed new strategy is increase housing choice and opportunities, for example, mixed income, mixed income.
All right.
We threw the example in there so that people knew what we were talking about, but it can become an action item instead, right?
So the, the first two are valid, a proposed third strategy. We'll, we'll double back and we'll, we'll have a discussion on that. Ward three and the mayor, what was your conversation around strategies for housing?
First two are fine, interesting second, third choice there. And the two list, items listed under revised or proposed language actually are more of an action item once we started talking about them.
Okay. Ward four and Ward five.
Pretty similar actually to Ward three and the mayor.
Okay.
I think we talked about the second, pursue incentives for, to residents. We liked that one because we, we liked the idea of rehabbing old homes and infilling versus building new.
Could potentially go under improved housing quality, I think, or.
So the pursuing incentives to residents for grabbing older houses, you proposed that might be a.
Action item of the second.
Yeah, but definitely worth noting.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that, that's, yeah, that's getting a little detailed of improving the housing quality, I think that's. And then the last group here, Ward six and Ward seven, what was your conversation around those strategies for housing?
Yeah, we were, we were mostly similar, particularly what Ward four and five just suggested, that, that incentives for rehabbing should be part of improving housing quality. The streamline and enhance housing services, we talked a little bit more about that because that is, that is more of a flow, a response kind of thing than the existing two are. We, we thought it could also fit under security and equity. Then we had more discussions about other action items that might fit into these areas. And so that's more of a discussion for next week.
Okay.
I don't know, Grace, if you want to call any more of those out.
Are you talking about keeping streamlined and enhanced housing services as still a proposed strategy?
Enforcement and.
Yeah, resource list, just kind of having more streamlined service entry point kind of referrals with our partners, not necessarily the city doing it, but having a resource list and being sure that our partners have the capacity to meet the needs.
Sure, so would that be more of an action item or are we talking, elevating that to a strategy?
So I think those would be action items under a possible new strategy of streamline and enhance housing options.
So we do, so proposing streamline and enhance housing services as, as an, as a proposed new strategy?
Yes, because it would have an action item.
I don't understand what streamline and enhance means.
What does streamline and enhance mean?
Yeah, what does, I, I didn't understand, it seems like if you streamline.
This is about housing services, so like point of contact, who people go to. It's not something that the city does as much.
Right.
But it works, we, we need better coordination with our partners in that area and that, and that.
We've got a lot of partners in that.
I know, I know, so that's why it may need its own focus compared to the other two that are a little more specific.
Mary Alice, did you have something?
Yeah, two things, the first one is, is I felt, I felt like.
Yeah, two things. The first one is, is I thought, I felt like based on what you guys are talking about with housing services, that's housing security, right? And then the second thing I just wanted to bring, I know that, I think Brayden has left, right? He went home. But I remember there was like a whole coalition that works on the housing and the streamlines. I don't know if the city needs to get involved there. That's my two cents.
I mean, if you want to hear more about it next week, we can. If you want to just nix it automatically tonight, that's fine too. I guess we'll go with what people decide. I have, I have answers to those, I have responses to that and other ideas, but I don't think that right now is the time.
So you see it as an action item and to be discussed next week? Is that what you're saying? Okay.
Or still potential new strategy. It could be an action item, but I'm saying that there would be action items under itself also.
Well, I would say for next week is, and you're going to get a chance to expand on this and send information Will's way, which I'll let you know. So yeah. If you want to send those notes and propose, we can discuss that, I think, at the next meeting and decide if that's valid or if those fall under something. But I think, I think for the sake of time, we'll leave those two proposed ones in there. And does that makes, is that fine with the group? All right. So let's move on to infrastructure, same, same order.
Are we going to vote?
Oh yeah. Do you have to, do you have to vote on, so we're vote, what we're voting on is we're keeping the initial two and then there's potentially two new proposed ones.
Two?
Two, because Mary, Mary Allison, Chris had a proposed one.
Housing choice and opportunity or something.
That's right. Okay.
Yeah. I don't, I don't remember. Will, Will would have to read it for me.
Increasing housing choice and opportunities.
I think they have it.
For example, mixed income.
So you guys have to decide if you want to kind of almost table that and say we have, we, we agree with the two and the two potential proposed ones or further discussion right now?
I'd like to accept the two and talk about the other two next week with action items. Because in, in talking about the action items, we may realize how to organize.
They could either stay, I, I agree too. They could either stay as like, no, they, they stand alone or you know what? As the more we've, as the more we talk about it, does, does it make sense in a different area?
I agree. Okay, those who just want to, if you just want to keep the two and we can talk about the other two later or the one.
The proposed.
Thumbs up for that. And it's eight. Okay. Eight thumbs. None.
All right. Strategic area number three, infrastructure. We had three existing ones. So group one.
We accepted all three and we felt that the proposed one was an action item.
Okay. Thank you. Group two, Ward, Ward three and mayor.
Accept first three.
Okay. Ward four and Ward five.
Same.
All right. And Ward six and Ward seven.
Yeah, we had accept the three existing, add that proposed one as an action item. We did have a recommended name, name change for the third strategy to expand sustainable infrastructure within the community.
Okay. So, so changing the word from green to sustainable, I think that's, that makes sense. That's valid. Anybody have discussion on that?
I guess I'd like to know why.
Because it's more, it's more expansive than just saying green, infrastructure.
Okay.
I'm actually curious why two years ago we picked green over sustainable. I wonder if we had the discussion differently.
It was the trendy thing to say.
Yeah, I think it sounded, I thought it was maybe sound a little better to the layperson in that. But yeah, the terms can be a little confusing. I have a whole, half a class I teach on it, on why sustainable, renewable, green, whatever.
Well, we'll, we'll take your word for it on that one. I think, I, my opinion is I think sustainable is fine to, to change that. I mean, that.
So when we do the straw poll, we're going to do it first on the word sustainable and then the three.
Sure.
Okay. So, okay, green, sustainable rather than green in all three categories, thumbs up. All right. Eight thumbs. Thank you very much.
So moving to the last area, which is the new name is now economic health. We have three current strategies underneath that. So do you want to speak on that? We'll go the same order again.
So we agreed with all three of them. We had two suggestions for the phrasing. The first one says support current local business. We just wanted to remove current so that we can do incubators and lots of different kinds of business. And then the second one was we wanted to completely change promote workforce development to enhance employment opportunities for Urbana residents.
I like that.
That was Carol.
Enhance employment opportunities.
For Urbana residents.
Why for Urbana residents?
Because we're the city of Urbana.
No, I. So if I don't live in Urbana, but I work here? I drive in?
You work here.
But I'd like to work here.
We're not keeping you from working here.
Enhance employment opportunities.
It's the only, I'm only saying this as the devil's advocate because when you put something, when you, when you specify, does it, yeah, does that have that versus, I like the enhance employment opportunities.
In Urbana, according to.
In Urbana. If you say in Urbana, yes, because we, we want you to work here, not necessarily the town over, but we don't necessarily need you to be a residence per se. We'd like for you to be a residence, but that's not required. And I'm sure you guys do have people from surrounding communities that do come here and want to come here and work. So that's the, did you get that, Will?
Enhance employment opportunities in Urbana.
In Urbana.
In Urbana.
Rather than promote workforce development.
Yep. That's the proposed. Group two, did you have any discussion around that one? Around those three strategies? Ward three and mayor.
Um, did we?
I don't think we really did.
Okay.
We did talk about living wages, but that's an action item. I don't think we really.
No, and we did, no, just the three.
Okay. And then our third group conversation?
I think we like what group one said.
Yep.
I, I know we talked about trades, but that sort of encompasses the, the new phrasing.
I think the employment opportunities, yeah, if you're talking about, yeah, maybe partnering with trades, different action items there. And then the last group, Ward six and Ward seven.
I don't know. I think we're on board with, I like the sound of the changes. You okay with that? We, we did want to figure out how create a tourist and entertainment district fits into, which strategy it fits into or whether it's part of a, a new strategy because we moved it in there.
I guess the only, my opinion, looking at that, does, you know, and I'll let anybody in the group speak of it. You're recruiting new businesses and industries. Is that different from tourist, entertainment?
No, there's, there's, I'm, I'm thinking of a place for the public realm study and the activation suggestions in that to live. And I think that's a little bit bigger than just recruiting new businesses and industries. Because that requires the city to take some actions with infrastructure and activities.
Mayor?
Well, the, the thought that came to mind that that's our downtown, the tourist and entertainment district. That's where a lot of the activities are now. Some of the.
We're not questioning doing it.
Yeah.
Or where it is.
Is it now a strategy where you're saying?
Own strategy or is it, which one are we going to shoehorn it in, under the three that are there?
You know, like.
I think it's its own, I think it has some differences from those three.
It's also an ongoing effort now, not just a council goal, but a, a general economic development goal of the city. So does it need to be?
Is it already happening? You know?
Pretty hap, you know, the effort's already there. So does it need to be a separate council goal is the question.
I kind of think it does.
You know, as, you know, as the word is like enhance or promote, you know, our downtown as a place, you know, a destination place, something like that. If you're, if you've already seemed like you've picked the location for your tourist and economic or entertainment district as your downtown, you could have a strategy that says something about that.
Develop?
Promote?
It's, yeah. I mean, I guess it's, it's, you develop and promote, you're doing them both at the same time or?
Implement the public realm study to create, to create this tourist and whatever. Like something about implementing the study that would make this happen. I don't know.
It does feel to me also like a different strategy. Could even just say enhance efforts to create the downtown as tourist and entertainment district with better words. But maybe enhancing.
Do we?
I like those words and I don't see why just because we were planning to do it anyway means that it wouldn't be a council goal. I feel like what I recall the last time we were doing this, that was actually the opposite push was, well, we have to do art allocation. So let's make that a goal. Well, we have to do the home art plan or we have to do this asset management plan. So let's make that a goal so we can have it part of this whole system. So I don't really understand why just because it would be done anyway, that that would mean that it's not a council.
Okay. Yep. So do we want to wordsmith that later or some, somebody can wordsmith something there? But it's something about the downtown being a place of destination, promote? Huh?
Can we do that next week?
Yep. We'll, we'll do that. Yep. Totally.
How about enhance that?
All right. So.
Eight minutes.
So what you're, so what you're potentially voting on is the three current strategies with the name change. And name changes for the first two of those and then a fourth strategy to be wordsmithed later, but about the downtown.
Sure. I'm not really looking at, at doing, adding an extra something.
I am. My thumbs up.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it doesn't matter if I, I've learned it doesn't matter if I vote something down. So.
Swear to God.
Okay, one, two, yeah, seven.
All right.
Seven thumbs.
All right. So that concludes us confirming those. So a little homework, a little bit of homework here before we prepare for next week. So based on time, we obviously did not get to brainstorming for action items underneath there. So Will, do you want to talk about this a little bit?
Yeah. The, the goal, the goal at the end of the next meeting is to have.
Speak up.
Sorry. I'll just put it closer. The goal, the end of the next meeting is to have for each strategy, an updated list of action items or to be very, very close to having the finalized list. So since it's a tight, you know, we'll be tight on time tomorrow. The idea is for council members to send suggested action items for each strategy. You can send them to me and that way staff can preview them and look at them for the time bound directive. They can look at them for measurability, realistic, whether or not we get the resources so that we can come prepared to the meeting on Monday with a little bit more detail on those particular action item proposals. So that way, you know, if something doesn't quite jive with what we think we can do with existing resources, that could be a discussion and we know it in advance. So the only wrinkle to that is this week is a short week, Friday is a holiday. So the sooner the better. If everybody can get proposed ideas in by the end of Wednesday, that would give staff off Thursday to complete it potentially and give everybody it for the weekend. If that doesn't happen, we can send some updated list on Monday before the meeting, but.
Did you just say that what we, what you want us to do is to send proposed action items to you? I just, because I really seriously.
Yes.
I'm not deaf, but.
So if you have ideas for proposed action items, it doesn't have to be for every single one, but whatever you're passionate about or you have ideas on, if you email those to Will.
Okay.
By the end of Wednesday, that gives staff Thursday and maybe a little bit of, a little bit of Monday. It's just giving us.
Include what we, what, what's already written here for action items? Or what do you mean? New stuff? You're talking about additional?
The action items that you want to be in the updated council goal. So include the ones that you want to see. If you think something doesn't belong, don't include that. If you want to tweak something, include that. If you want a whole new action item, include that. I think there's a couple of action items if you go through, we have completed already. If you look at the most recent quarterly report, but just send all of your thoughts and I'll try to aggregate those and distribute them to the appropriate folks internally to look at them in advance.
So just as a reminder, I know you guys have done this, but just a reminder, action items are the measurable things that you're going to do as a city that support the strategies we just talked about, which eventually support these major strategic areas. So, you know, what are these actionable items that you can, that you can do? Again, we're, we're looking for ideas. It will speed up the process. Next week, we're going to have a lot more time or we're going to have a process where we can have discussions around these and eventually have some, at least some, hopefully a fair amount of consensus. So you have a good, at least draft that you can finalize moving forward. That's the goal.
Okey doke.
All right. That's all I have. I really appreciate you guys sticking around and putting the effort in. I'll let you guys formally close it.
Anything else? Okay. With no further business, let's get out of here.